Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 16th Planning Commission meeting. Happy to see some of you in person. We have 7:00 o'clock exactly. Staff, can you lead us in a roll call, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Present.
Commissioner Domarat.
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Commissioner Hauser.
Present.
Commissioner Lille.
Present.
And Commissioner Wright.
Present.
All right. And Commissioner Hauser, can you lead us in salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser, or Vice Chair Hauser. At this time before administrative business, I am opening up for public comment about the administrative business. Are there any public comments?
There is no one on the phone right now.
All right. Thank you. I'll close public comment on that, and we'll start with administrative business. Can I have an approval of the Order of Agenda or a motion if there's any comments on the Order of Agenda? Commissioner Lille.
I'd like to make an adjustment to the agenda tonight. I'd like to move communications up before the public hearings, if that's okay with everyone else. And given that, I'll make a motion to approve the Order of Agenda with the change, as I mentioned, communications both commission and staff prior to the public hearings tonight.
So Commissioner Lille, right after the consideration items? Is that correct?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Ferguson?
I'll second Commissioner Lille's motion.
Motion and a second. And that passes. Thank you, Commissioner Lille. All right. Next item, approval of minutes. There are none. And designation of liaison. It looks like there is none. All right. So on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. Are there any comment cards? Are there any comments for call-ins?
We do have one caller on the phone right now, and if that caller has an interest in making a comment, they can raise their hand.
And Chair, while we're waiting, I'll just announce again that there are instructions on the screen, as well as in the agenda. For anyone wishing to dial in to make a public comment at this evening's Planning Commission meeting, you can dial 650-898-6965 and enter the conference ID that's on the screen or on the agenda, and then follow the instructions of staff from there when an item that you're interested in speaking on is called.
Thank you.
No hands have been raised.
All right. Thank you. I'll close oral communications. And consent items, there are none. And next up, consideration items. So for consideration tonight, we have consideration of annual report to City Council for calendar year 2021. The recommended SEQA action is not applicable, and recommended action is approve the annual report and discuss the presentation to City Council, including identification of a commission representative or multiple representatives. Staff, can we have a report? Thanks.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Commissioners. I am Acting Planning Director Christian Murdock. This item before you is a routine annual item for the Planning Commission to consider its annual report to the City Council. City Council resolutions governing commissions and committees requires that each commission and committee prepare an annual report each year on that commissioner committee's activities, as well as items that it has been working on or intends to work on in a subsequent year. The City Council is currently scheduled to consider the commission and committee annual reports from all of the commissions and committees at a study session starting at 5:00 p.m. on Monday, June 13. And so, as mentioned in the introduction, not only is staff requesting that the commission discuss its annual report for 2021, but also identify one or more Planning Commission representatives to attend and to present and to answer any questions from the City Council. And so, staff has prepared a draft annual report for the commission to consider in Attachment A of the Agenda Packet, and we look forward to answering any questions or whatever the discussion of the commission is on the annual report. Thank you.
Thank you, Acting Planning Director Murdock. Does the commission have any questions on the annual report? Commissioner, is it Domarat or is it Ferguson? Domarat. Perfect.
In looking at the report, the draft report, we have some graphics that talk about public hearings held, dwelling units approved. So we're looking very much, and I understand out on the positive side of what we've done, is there value in adding to this or another one in things that we did not do? In other words, permits that were denied that year, or that kind of thing? To give an idea of not just all the good things we did, but there are some things that we did not allow to go forward. Is there any value in doing that?
Thank you, Commissioner Domarat. I think it's a great question. Sometimes what doesn't get approved is indicative of the thought or consideration that the commission's given. I haven't prepared a list of any actions that may have had an adverse recommendation from the Planning Commission. None come to mind that the Planning Commission denied during the year. So I think it's something I can keep in mind for preparation of future annual reports for the commission. It's a point well taken. Thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson, did you have? No. Commissioner Hauser?
Thank you, Chair. So I did have one comment just on the formatting. And I had sent an email about this as well. But essentially, I think we have kind of an unclear area between the 25 new permits initiated and the 1,591 permits issued. So I think it would be really helpful to label them in a way where it's clear that one is actually building permit activity and the other is discretionary permit applications.
Yes. Thank you, Vice Chair Hauser. That is a good observation, and I think a casual reader could misunderstand the figures. And so, what I would suggest, if it pleases the commission, is in Section 2, the third bullet point there, we're summarizing the 25 new permit applications, clarifying that that is for entitlement or discretionary permit applications, to distinguish it more clearly from building permits, which is discussed in the larger figure in Section 5 of the
I think that would be very helpful.
Commissioner Lille.
I have two questions. One is, I know you're asking for volunteers for presenting the report. Is there a date set for when that will be presented to City Council?
Yes, there is, Commissioner Lille. It would be a study session of the City Council starting at 5:00 p.m. on, and I had the date, and I should remember it already, but June 13, 5:00 p.m. on Monday, June 13.
Okay. Thank you. And then my second one is, under Section 5, building permit activity, I'm trying to tie in, given that this is a Planning Commission report, kind of Planning Commission actions to permits issued? So if there is a correlation between perhaps either Section 4 or even the numbers in Section 2 correlating to the permits issued and inspections? So if there were 20 discretionary permits, for example, that led to however many permits, how many were impacted by those decisions of the Planning Commission? Because I guess the way that I'm reading building permit activity right now, that's more planning department activity as opposed to Planning Commission. So I don't know if there's a correlation now, or if that would be a future item to look into for next year's or subsequent reports. So I guess that's more of a comment than a question.
Yes. I think it's an interesting point. You know, as this report has evolved over the years, you know, it started very much planning division-centric as far as, you know, staff functions, and the commission has steadily expanded it with great suggestions about the metrics that relate directly to the Planning Commission's involvement. I think that's probably another good evolution, and I could perhaps attempt to identify which projects that received building permits in the year were tied to prior Planning Commission discretionary or entitlement permits, and see if there's a ready way to do that.
Are there any additional questions? I guess Commissioner Lille's question kind of made me think of another question. I understand that it's well representative of past commission approvals potentially having the building permit activity section in the annual report as Section 5. But I guess if a commissioner were to present a report to City Council, the building permit activity would be something that wasn't a part of the Planning Commission's purview. It happens after Planning Commission. So I guess what's the intent for that, for the building permit activity being a part of the Planning Commission's report to the city?
Sure. It's a great question. I think, you know, I see relevance in a couple different ways, probably, and perhaps there are others, or perhaps you'll disagree. But I think one is to get a general sense of the level of building activity in town, and, you know, whether it's a discretionary permit that comes through the Planning Commission before getting a building permit, or it's something constructed in reliance on the general zoning provisions of the city. At some point, the Planning Commission had involvement in recommending those zoning regulations that govern building in town. And so I think that it may be indirect, but I think in that sense, it's probably relevant. And maybe all the more so, you know, as we shift through adoption of the general plan and into a comprehensive zoning update. And then we'll have an opportunity to maybe look comparatively at prior year building permit activity to future year building permit activity and see, hey, is there anything noticeable or statistically significant about the difference? You know, did we enable more housing to be built, or buildings to be improved, or, you know, more commercial development to occur? I think, given the long duration of our current zoning ordinance and regulations, it's maybe more detached from that frame of reference, in my opinion.
Okay. Makes sense, and I do like having the context because it does give a trend. But thank you for answering my question.
Yes. One of the new things that happened this year was approval of the ADU ordinance. Should we add a line somewhere in the report, maybe under building permits or Planning Commission's hearings, or maybe even a new subsection to cover the fact that we are beginning to approve ADU applications? Is my question.
Yes, Commissioner Godwin. I think, you know, there may be some relevance if you think that's a particular data point that bears a relationship to the Planning Commission's work on the ADU ordinance, for instance. It really fits in that pattern. I described in response to Chair Berman's question about, you know, the relevance of building permit activity. That's a figure that we report already in our annual progress report on housing construction to the state. And so it's something I could pull without much difficulty, as long as the commission thought there was some relevance for reporting purposes here.
Commissioner Hauser?
Thank you. I actually think that's a great idea, especially because it counts toward arena numbers. So I think it's related to the activity that we do, especially if it's easy for staff to pull it.
Any other questions? And remind me, do we take public comment on this? Okay. Then with that, I'll open up public comment.
While we're maybe waiting for some, see if anybody in person wants to provide a comment, I'll remind those on the phone that if you would like to provide public comment, you can call in. The telephone number 650-898-6965, conference ID 383-609-442, which is shown on the screen. If you're already on the phone and you would like to speak, press star five to raise your
Oh, and if you're in the audience tonight and you have a comment on this item, there are comment cards at the back of the room, and you could fill those out and present them to staff here. Is that a comment card?
Yeah. It's considered.
Okay. All right. It sounds like there are no comments on this consideration item. So I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for further discussion. Commissioner Hauser?
I mean, if no one has additional thoughts, I'd be willing to make a motion.
And Commissioner Hauser, will that motion include, I believe one of the items we need to discuss is which commissioner will do the report to City Council, and it could be multiple commissioners?
That's a great, so I was planning to include the ADU comment and the clarification that we had mentioned between the 25 and the 1,591. If someone, do we want to maybe discuss who's available first?
Yeah. So it's the evening of June 13, starting at 5:00 p.m. We could have multiple commissioners. I personally can be available. I think it's also nice to have multiple people to show some unity in our commission, but I could be available.
I can also be available, too.
I can be available, too.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I actually have a question. We do have another meeting before the 13th. We have a meeting on June 6, so we could also maybe discuss that, too. But it sounds like we have several folks.
Well, I'll just add, Chair Berman, from staff's perspective, you know, having less than a quorum of the commission is preferred. So if we have three commissioners already willing and able to attend, then maybe the box is checked on. Adequate commission representation without, you know, triggering other requirements like noticing the meeting and so forth.
That's a good point. It's, oh, is this one you? Commissioner Hauser?
Oh, yeah. So I think it's, I'm still in the process of making the motion. I don't need to include the attendees in the motion.
No, just to approve the commission's annual report.
So I moved to approve the annual report and discuss the presentation to City Council, including identification of commission representatives. I guess we did need to. With the amendment to include ADUs as well as the clarification as far as permits versus discretionary permits.
Thank you. And can I clarify, Vice Chair Hauser? Commissioner Lille, I think, made a separate point on building permits. I was wondering if you were including that or excluding that.
I thought, did you have additional alterations that you'd like included? I'd be happy to entertain them.
It was around if the date is easily accessible to tie the building permits to prior planning action. If not, then we can move that to next year.
Is that something that staff can clarify one more time?
Well, it will require a manual process. And as you can see with the number of building permits issued, you know, searching for individually may be challenging. We could maybe find a different way to do it, but no direct way right now is coming to mind.
My preference would be to leave the motion as is.
Yeah.
Commissioner Domarat?
I guess prior to voting on the motion, I'd like to hear more from staff. What is doable and not doable for this current report? I mean, it sounds like the ADU may be doable, or are you saying?
ADU is definitely doable.
The next report, it would be doable. But so give us an idea of, you know, if we vote on it, we don't want it order you to do something of it, then it's too much burden.
Right. So both of the items that Vice Chair Hauser has included are readily available and able to be included in this year's annual report. Should the commission want something, maybe I can take this next year to address Commissioner Lille's point and see if there's a way to maybe flag it differently for building permits moving forward, or something along those lines.
Great. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion that Vice Chair Hauser presented. Do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Domarat?
Second.
Motion and a second. And that passes. Thank you. All right. So next up, we have communications, given the Order of Agenda that was approved at the beginning of our meeting. So let's start with council communications. Commissioner Lille? Or not, I'm sorry, commission communications. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just a report out from last week's City Council meeting. So there were two items that were on the agenda. 570 Crespby did get postponed to, or continued to, I think, June 27, City Council meeting. So that's the, it was continued to that date, so there wasn't much discussion there from City Council. And then the second item was the Growth Management Ordinance, which was heard around 11:30 p.m. And that got approved by City Council, or, well, it was extended to five years, which was the recommendation from Planning Commission. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Lille. Thank you for representing us at the council meeting. Any other commission communications? Staff communications?
Thank you, Chair Berman. Good evening again, Acting Planning Director Christian Murdock. I would just continue on with Commissioner Lille's updates and clarify that the City Council introduced the Growth Management Ordinance extension and will vote on whether to adopt that at the next City Council meeting. And if so adopted, it would take effect 30 days later.
Thank you. All right. Then I will close communications. And it's my understanding that some commissioners need to recuse themselves. Is now a time for them? Okay, we'll wait. All righty. Okay. So next up, new public hearings. So our first public hearing tonight is CDP 439-22, file number 2022-014, Coastal Development Permit, CDP 439-22, to establish two on-street temporary safe parking program parking spaces that are 60 feet by 10 feet tandem orientation for the use by a program participant living in an operational recreational vehicle, trailer, or motor home with operating restroom facilities for a limited period of time on the west side of the Bradford Way public right-of-way. It's east of 2600 Francisco Boulevard. The assessor parcel number is 016-430-020, and immediately southwest of the State Route 1, exit 505, Sharp Park Road, off-ramp, and Bradford Way intersection. The recommended SEQA action is Class 1 and Class 4 categorical exemptions, SEQA Guideline Sections 15301 and 15304, and common sense exemption, exception, rather, and SEQA Guideline Section 15061B3. And the recommended action is approve as conditioned. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Again, I am Acting Planning Director Christian Murdock. I want to make some preliminary remarks before we embark upon this first public hearing. As the commission is aware, we have three public hearings tonight on related subject matter. However, each of these hearings stands independently. And so it's important for purposes of the record to make sure any questions or comments the commission has are asked in each of the public hearings as they relate to any common questions or concerns the commission may have. And similarly, the responses from staff may reiterate the same information again in each hearing in response to make sure that we get the information in the record. Staff's responses may, where appropriate, refer to the prior responses in a prior public hearing and incorporate them by reference, and briefly summarize the points. But we do need to make sure that we're introducing the evidence for each of these items into the record for the respective public hearing. And so with that, I will turn it over to Senior Planner Bonnie O'Connor, who's going to make the staff presentation this evening. And then we have other city staff available, including Police Chief Dan Stidl, who will be able to answer questions. And we also have dialed in this evening Anita Reese, who's the Executive Director of the Pacifica Resource Center, who is the city's partner for this project in terms of the operational components of the project. So with that, Ms. O'Connor.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I am Senior Planner Bonnie O'Connor. Tonight, the Planning Commission is being asked to consider the approval of Coastal Development Permit, CDP 439-22, for the establishment and minor improvements for two on-street temporary safe parking program parking spaces on the west side of Bradford Way public right-of-way. As background for tonight's item, the City Council adopted Resolution 12-2022 in February of this year, which approved the city's participation in a three-year temporary safe parking program that will provide up to 13 parking spaces for exclusive use by program participants living in an operational recreational vehicle, trailer, or motor home with operating toilet facilities, while program participants seek permanent housing solutions. The resolution also authorized the city manager to execute the operations agreement with the Pacifica Resource Center, which details the terms, provisions, and obligations of the Pacifica Resource Center and city to implement the program. This action also followed the City Council's approval of the locations of the 13 program parking spaces as part of a settlement agreement in November 2021. This approval recognized the spaces located in the coastal zone could require approval of a coastal development permit. As detailed in the staff report, staff found that the project, which includes establishment of the two, of the two program parking spaces along Bradford Way, placement of pavement markings and installation of signage meets the definition of development per Pacifica Municipal Code and does require issuance of a coastal development permit. Staff's analysis, as detailed in the staff report, finds that the project is consistent with the city's certified local coastal program, and because Bradford Way project, the Bradford Way project site is located between the nearest public road and the shoreline, staff finds the project in conformity with the public recreation policies of Chapter 3 in the Coastal Act. Finally, staff's analysis finds that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Therefore, staff recommends approving the project as conditioned to support the temporary safe parking program approved by City Council. That concludes my presentation. And Deputy Director of Public Works Sam Batista is present to represent the applicant role of this project. Chief of Police, Chief of Police Dan Stidl is present, and Anita Reese from the Pacifica Resource Center is also available via phone to help answer any questions regarding the operation of the temporary safe parking program. Thank you.
Thank you, Senior Planner O'Connor. Does the commission have any questions for staff?
Chair Berman, before we jump in, I just want to maybe clarify one point. It is unusual to have the city here as a permit applicant, as well as the reviewing body. So Deputy Director Batista is here in his capacity as the applicant representative, and so should be afforded the time accordingly and enable an opportunity to participate in the hearing at the appropriate time for the applicant.
Okay. Certainly. I think we'll do council questions first, and then we'll move on to the applicant, and then we'll ask the applicant any questions, should we have them. Okay. Commissioner, or Vice Chair Hauser?
Thank you, Chair. I have, I have like probably five questions, but I think my most broad one is I would love it if staff could give us just a little bit of background on, oversized vehicles have obviously been a very large topic in Pacifica. And so I'd love a little bit of background on like how we got to where we are tonight and what the scope is versus what it is not. I think that would be a helpful thing to explain.
I think I can answer a portion of that, and then I'm going to look to some others to help. So the scope for tonight, for this item, is the establishment and the reservation of public right-of-way for the use of the program, and the placement of signage and pavement markings. It is not getting into the details of the program itself. But I can maybe look to, who wants, who wants to help there?
So I will do my best to address the big picture issue here. And so certainly, the phenomenon of recreational vehicles parking on streets in Pacifica has been an issue for a number of years. And I think there's a perception, if not a reality, that the number of such vehicles parking has increased in recent years. And so I think it was with that increase and the perceived neighborhood and community impacts, as well as safety impacts, that prompted the city council to investigate ways that the city could use its police power to regulate the parking of those vehicles. And so a couple of years ago, and again, this isn't the planning department's, in the planning department's wheelhouse, so I don't have all of the dates and specifics necessarily at hand. But generally speaking, city council sought to regulate those vehicles, considered a number of options, private property, public property, public streets, et cetera. Didn't necessarily find any of those particularly attractive as regulatory solutions, because they all have pros and cons and trade-offs. And so ultimately, the city council identified a relatively narrow set of locations in the city where oversized vehicles could park, driven by safety considerations, given the size and bulk of these vehicles relative to the design configuration of the public streets. And so in places where the streets were too narrow, where these large vehicles might obstruct safe vehicular or bicycle travel, places where bike lanes were present, where there was dangerous slopes or curvatures in the street that obstructed sightlines, the city determined those locations would be unsuitable for parking of oversized vehicles, posted signage as such, and then allowed them to park in an unpermitted capacity in other locations. Fast forward a year or so, and the ACLU sued the city for its enforcement of the oversized vehicle ordinance, which resulted in, you know, I wouldn't call it protracted, but you know, a lengthy litigation process whereby the city reached a settlement with the litigants in that case, which involved the development of a safe parking program, which is the program subject to the permitting actions tonight. And so through the course of that litigation and the settlement process, the city agreed to the identified locations, some of which are in and some of which are outside of the coastal zone. Those locations in the coastal zone, as Ms. O'Connor mentioned, require coastal development permits. And so one key component that may be helpful not to lose sight of is, by virtue of settling this litigation, the actions against the city's oversized vehicle ordinance will be dismissed. And so the city will resume its ability to enforce the oversized vehicle ordinance for locations other than the safe parking permit locations. And so as with so many things, there's a trade-off where identifying authorized permitted locations that are supported by social programs and programmatic support from the Pacifica Resource Center will allow the city to have more extensive and expansive enforcement and regulation of oversized vehicles parked in many, many, including the vast majority of locations in Pacifica. And so that's the big picture setup as to how we got to where we are today.
That was a really helpful description, and I appreciate that. My other questions are much more narrow. So the first one is for this particular area. You know, I want to understand if the road width is appropriate for both emergency vehicles, like fire trucks to pass, and that vehicular traffic will still be safe and that the pedestrian walkway will be unimpeded in this location.
Yes. So the location of this site was analyzed by the applicant, the public, Engineering Division of Public Works. And so I will leave it to Deputy Director Batista to provide more details of how this location came to be. But it does provide the adequate width for, through traffic to continue.
Okay.
Thank you, Bonnie. That's correct. The Engineering Division did go out in the field to actually do the field measurements and to ensure that the 10 by 30 space would accommodate the, the street width. So we had strict criteria. So it would be a 10 by 30 space. And if it was not a bus route, then we made sure that the width of the street was at least 10 feet. If it is on a bus route, we made sure that the width of the street would be at least 12 feet. So we made up, you know, we did go out there and we made the measurements, and we determined that this space did fit.
Okay. And are fire trucks included in that analysis?
Yes. For any vehicle, we, we made sure that it would fit.
Okay. And then as far as like proximity, I'm not sure if there's, you know, trash or, you know, condensation or any sort of item that would be generated from the vehicles. But are the storm basins that are adjacent to catch basins, is, are we worried about anything getting into the stormwater system inappropriately?
The, the use of the site would not be any different than how it is currently used by parking participants. So there are provisions or within the code of conduct of the program that would prohibit any release of materials that are not suitable, or such as gray water or trash outside of the, out of, outside of the occupied vehicle. And so, yeah, it wouldn't change the current use of, of the area right now.
And if Executive Director Reese is available to, to further describe the process that goes into inspection of the RVs, in order for them to participate in the program, there is some serviceability component inspections.
Well, if Ms. Reese wants to respond, I'd be happy to hear it. But my, my last question is just about this particular spot, understanding that we haven't heard the other two kind of similar hearings on different locations tonight. This location seems to be the one that's furthest from businesses and homes. And so I wondered if the city or if the applicant considered doing more parking, you know, more oversized vehicle parking in this location to kind of ameliorate potential questions we have about other locations.
I know that during the, during the analysis, we had spaces. And I know that this was one that was considered by staff to be the, the location, you know, in terms of having to relook at other spaces. We, we would have to do.
More, more analysis, to see if we could do like four rather than two?
Correct.
Okay.
And I will just add that an important consideration for the city council was ensuring that there wasn't an over-concentration and a distribution of these equitably, maybe equitably is not the right term, but a distribution throughout the city so that there were locations, you know, in the northern, central, and southern portions of Pacifica.
So did council ask for the limit to be two, or was that kind of more of a dispersment interpretation that staff made?
I'm not aware specifically if the council directed two for this location. My understanding is the settlement agreed on, I believe, 13 spaces overall.
Okay.
And so it made sense to a certain extent, given the distribution in other site locations.
Oh, that's, those are my questions. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Commissioner Domaret?
A similar follow-up to that, you would think that enforcement of, the different enforcement issues that would go along with this would be a lot easier if you had more than two, so that enforcement doesn't have to go all over the city looking for, for violations. I, I guess it's, it's the same kind of question. Why not, in a location that doesn't have a lot of controversy, have more than two? So there seems to be some economies of scale, you know, with, with having more in one location, but.
Sure. I understand the thought process, Commissioner Domaret. What I will say is that the city council identified the suitable locations and the number of RVs that would be appropriate in each location. And so city staff then applied for the permits to execute the program as designed by the city council. And so it's likely beyond the scope of the planning commission this evening to seek to increase the number, but could consider the number that's proposed in each permit.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah, I had some questions about, I guess, the program in general. First one would be, are there any other services provided besides just opening up of the public right-of-way to the participants? Are, is there any provision for refuse cleanup, for additional street sweeping, for additional patrolling by law enforcement? I mean, any sort of additional service that is, comes along with this program? Or is it just simply they're allowed to park there?
Good evening, Commissioner Dan Stidl, your Chief of Police. So regarding the enforcement, I'll speak to that aspect of it. You know, the Police Department is very well aware of where these locations are going to be, and we're very well aware that it will be important for the applicants of this program, the people that will be residing in those spaces, if you will, in their vehicles, to adhere to the code of conduct and also adhere to all of our local, state, and federal laws. In terms of enforcement, the Police Department will be keeping an eye on and watching those locations. One, to make sure that those folks in those locations are protected, just like everybody else, but also at the same time to make sure that the laws are being followed and that the people that are parking, vehicles that are parked in those spaces are actually permitted to be parking. So that will be just part of our routine patrol for our beat officers to check on those, just like we would check on any other areas of town.
And with regard to other programmatic components, hopefully Executive Director Reese will have an opportunity to chime in in a moment. But there are a number of components, including working towards permanent housing solutions. And there are sewage pumping components, as well as trash collection and disposal components that are part of the programmatic side of this program. And so hopefully she can expand on those points.
Yes, I see Ms. Reese's hand raised. So I'm gonna, if we can maybe pause for a second and see if she can unmute herself.
Yeah, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Yeah, so along with the safe place to park for 29 days consecutively, we will be offering intensive case management, regular check-ins, working towards housing goals that they will determine. So we'll be working with them with the goal of helping them return to housing as quickly as possible. Some folks are going to need longer than others, because as you know, the cost of living is quite high here. But we will be encouraging folks to be thinking creatively about where they may want to live longer term. In addition, there is going to be regular garbage and recycling pickup, as well as gray and black water collection. We're still working that out with the city and ecology, but hope to have that all set up before, well, we'll have all of that set up before folks begin using the spaces.
And Ms. Reese, could you address the earlier question about leakage of fluids and so forth, and explain what, what serviceability inspections the vehicles will need to undertake?
Oh, for sure. One of the requirements is that folks have basic safety and sanitation features that are in proper working condition. So if for any reason during our inspection of, of the vehicles, we will work with them to fix any of those issues before they're actually in the program, or within 29 days, depending on the circumstances. But we, we will definitely be taking that into consideration. We want to make sure they're safe, as well as the community is safe from unexpected leakage.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Commissioner Godwin? Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Ferguson.
Can I direct a question to Ms. Reese? Ms. Reese, could you describe for me, are there any criteria within the program for storage capacity of freshwater tanks, gray water tanks, and black water tanks? As well as, is there any criteria for the usage of generators with these RVs?
Sure. In terms of minimum requirements for those storage tanks, there isn't anything specific. And they just have to have working, working storage and containment units. So that's the, the main thing that we want to make sure. And then if they need to dump more regularly, then we'll work that out with the individuals. Like, say they have a smaller tank, then we'll, we'll work those things out with the individuals if they can't wait every two, twice a month, which is the plan right now for dumping of gray and black water. The other question, sorry, was?
Generator usage.
Did you remind me what the other part? Oh, generator, thank you. They are allowed to use generators, but have to have them off by 10:00 PM and can't turn them on before 8:00 AM.
Question for staff then related to that. Has there been any look into an AQMD permit for these operators to use generators? Sorry, the Area Quality Management District?
Not specifically. I'm not aware that generators of the, the size or type that are common for RV operation would require such a permit. But it's something that we could, we could look into to ensure compliance.
I didn't hear that there's any limitation on the size that they're allowed to use. And if, for example, the city wants to install a generator, the minimum size is pretty small before they have to apply for the right to use that generator for even emergency uses, so for critical infrastructure. So I don't see why that wouldn't apply to these cases. Just to, just to confirm, Ms. Reese, if I understood you correctly, there is no minimum storage capacity requirements for any of these vehicles, but there is planned to be a twice monthly pickup of gray and black water?
Yeah, sorry, I muted myself. Yes, there is no minimum storage capacity. But yes, there is going to be at least bimonthly black and gray water pickup.
Okay. Speaking from personal experience, if I may add some commentary here, my extended family does own a fairly large recreational vehicle with fairly large capacity tanks per standard. And for a long weekend of three to four days with four or five people, that is very limiting. There's not a shower capability for everybody with even that setup. So I question how, how feasible it is to do a twice monthly pickup for people that are using and living in these constantly. But I'll leave that to the program to figure out how they want to address.
Yeah, we recognize that that might need to be adjusted a bit. And I will say that we determined the two, twice monthly, at least initially based on surveys of the folks that we know who have been living in motor homes. Generally, they are single, sometimes two people in the, in the motor home. And for the most part, their strategy has been using public facilities during the day. And, and, public facilities during the day and having a gym membership to take showers. In addition, PRC offers showers to all of our, our unhoused clients and would definitely prioritize the folks who are in the safe parking program.
Could staff speak to where the public facilities are nearest to this particular location?
Are you referring to where the nearest dumping station would be?
The nearest restroom, the nearest garbage disposal of any kind near this station. From my understanding, it's fairly remote. If, if, for example, they wanted to use a restroom and their, and their gray or black water tank was full?
The Maury Point Trailhead has a bathroom.
And then there are public restrooms at the Pacifica Pier Library when operating in Sharp Park, as well as in the Lindemar.
Mile walk each way.
Well, you asked the nearest, and I believe that's to be the nearest.
Yeah, just clarifying.
Any other questions?
No, I'll leave it for there.
Okay. Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I have a few comments and a question. I guess one of the things I wanted to make clear is when these sites were being considered, the city went as far as looking at Muscle Rock and working with Daly City for locations down to Half Moon Bay, and looking at RV operations there and the local RV park in the city. None of those discussions ever bore fruit, but they were, were held. I guess my second point is, right near the Bradford site, there's a, there are garbage cans, because I use them walking my dog, a short distance away at the, basically at the, at the beach. And finally, 20 years ago, when I first bought an RV, I mounted solar panels on the top back in the day when solar panels were a lot less efficient. And it really extended the life of the batteries. We could go to Shasta for several days and water ski and use the, use the facility. I mean, not run out of power. So I suggest that people think about adding solar panels to these things, which is, can be done in about an hour, and really makes a difference in the battery life. And then finally, my question is, is for the, the chief, it seemed then finally, my question is for the chief. It seemed to me, when I've casually driven around town, there's a lot of out-of-state registered RVs that are here for longer than a couple of weeks, and my understanding of the state law is after a few weeks, you need to re-register the vehicle. Is that something you're gonna look at as part of this process?
For something like that, it's difficult with recreational vehicles. So when you're talking about having to register a vehicle in the state, it's not necessarily that you are, you have to be deemed a resident. So if I am, if I live in Nevada and I'm coming to California, and I'm gonna vacation in California for four months, not that these folks are vacationing, but if I'm doing that, I'm not required to register my vehicle in California at that point. But after, again, I believe it was 20 days, the vehicle code says, once you've, which you have residency, and there's a whole list of things that the Department of Motor Vehicles looks at to determine whether you've established residency. So in a case, if somebody, for example, were to have moved from out-of-state and come to Pacifica, and they're permanently living in Pacifica, they're a resident of Pacifica, and that's the vehicle, that's their vehicle that's registered to them, then in that case, yes, they would have to register the vehicle in the state. But as part of the, part of the agreement with the people that apply for this program, if they're allowed to occupy a vehicle that they own, that they lease, or that they have permission from someone else to use. So if I live in Nevada and I'm loading my RV to somebody who lives in Pacifica, who happens to be homeless and is living in their vehicle in one of the 13 locations, that would be one of those gray areas where I don't think that they would be required to register that vehicle unless they, in California, unless they plan to permanently keep that in California. So it's a little bit of a, not a gray area, but there's a whole bunch of if, ands, or buts when it comes to whether or not that would be required.
That makes it a lot clearer for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Leal.
Thank you. I have a few questions. One is related to the 30 by 10 measurements. I assume that's based off of probably averages of recreational vehicle sizes. I was just curious as to what happens if a vehicle is outside of those limits with these parking, with these parking spaces. Are they not allowed to be in the program? Because I've noticed it's also kind of a standard we're using for the other projects, but for these, if it's outside of those limits, what kind of happens in the program?
I'll invite Dr. Reese to maybe start with that response.
Sorry for the delay. I don't actually know the answer to that question. It would be something we'd need to talk to the city about, because the city determined the size of the spaces. So we would do our best to get somebody who was in that, in the program to be within that range, but then that does exclude folks who have larger vehicles at this point, given the location, given the size of each of the spaces.
Okay. I guess, just to follow on that question, so let's say, I don't think there's gonna be, at least for these spaces, there doesn't seem to be hard markers or hard barriers related to the size of the spaces. So let's say someone in the program is 35 feet long. Enforcement of those five feet outside of that over 72 hours, is there any sort of, I guess, what would happen then? Or would that be waived because they're in the program, even though it's larger?
I'm gonna attempt to...
Chief Stedel?
I'm gonna attempt to answer that, if I understand your question. So you're saying if, if a permit were issued to a vehicle that was 35 feet, would they then be held to the 72-hour standard, or they would be allowed to park there under the conditions of the permitting?
Yeah, that's the gist of the question, and I guess the, kind of where you started off with, Chief, it's, would they be issued a permit if the vehicle's outside that size?
Right. So at this point, I mean, I would divert some of that to Director Reese, because the Police Department does not issue the permits. If there were a question that came up about whether, you know, if the resource, or if Director Reese came to us and said to the city and said, there's a vehicle that's a couple feet longer, is this allowed, is this not allowed, we would probably have to work with the Police Department, as well as engineering with Public Works to determine whether it would be allowed or not. Once that vehicle's issued the permit, then they are not subject to the 72-hour rule.
Okay, thank you. Second question is regarded to the exterior of the vehicle, and if anything's allowed, so vice versa, if the vehicle's 20 feet long, and someone wants a 10-foot backyard with lawn chairs or whatnot, kind of what is, what is allowed, what is permitted outside of the vehicle within that space?
I will ask for Director Reese to respond to that one.
Yes. Yeah, nothing is allowed outside of the vehicle, even if they have more space. So everything is to be contained within the vehicle. So no lawn chairs, no backyard, no, nothing, other than, all of their items need to be inside the vehicle at all times.
Thank you. Along those lines with refuse, I know it sounds like you're still working with, or still working with Recology and the city on that plan. Along kind of exterior of the vehicle, receptacles or any trash receptacles for pickup, I'm just curious if there's been any discussion or any comments on that, even though it's not finalized, and where those would be stored?
Sure. At this point, the idea, where we're at right now is that folks would dispose of their garbage on specific dates, potentially have access throughout the week, but we haven't quite figured that out. But they would not have things outside. So their garbage would be inside, and we would need to figure out how to get them, so that they weren't storing all of their garbage within the vehicle over the week. We want to make sure that they have the ability to dispose of their trash before, before then, if it becomes too much.
Thank you. Last question is, I guess, comment and just confirmation of, so folks participating in the program, we're working towards getting them permanent housing. So with that, they may have additional vehicles to go to their place of work and, and working towards that permanent housing. So they may have additional vehicles, and I just wanted to confirm, my understanding is that the additional vehicles would not receive permits, and they would be required to find additional space in the public right-of-way, and would be subjected to other Pacifica municipal codes related to parking?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Commissioner Domarat.
So I guess no ADU units are allowed to... My mother-in-law can't move in. All the locations, but we can focus on this one, are still pretty close to some residential areas. So my concern is with the generators, which typically, right now, are gas-driven. They are not silent. They are, they are very noisy. So there will be a time, and legal can address this within the next X amount of years, that the state will mandate that none of those kind of gas units can be used anymore. So they'll all have to be electrical, solar-based. So, but, but that's not in effect yet. So I'm wondering, is there any way to enforce some kind of noise abatement on those generators? There's packages that can envelop them that can help reduce some of that noise. So I was just wondering if that was a consideration?
Yes. Commissioner Domarat, I'll share my thoughts first. And before I jump into your question, I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Ferguson's question about the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. So their threshold for registration of generators is 50 brake horsepower. I don't know exactly what that means in terms of a generator size, but my understanding and impression is that it's probably larger than most RVs would be likely to have. But it is a known requirement, and it's something that we can continue to explore with the Resource Center to see if there's a way to incorporate that registration requirement into the program requirements. As for your questions, Commissioner Domarat, I think the specific regulation in the program currently is the quiet hours from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM, which program participants would not be allowed to run their generators. During the daytime, these locations are all located very close to Highway 1, which is within the highest noise corridor in the city, generated by the highway noise from vehicles. And so I can't say definitively that it won't be noticeable noise, but with respect to the surrounding context, I don't expect it to generate objectionable noise from the use of those small generators.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes, thank you. My first question, I guess, would be to the young lady from the Resource Center, and that would be, are Pacifica families prioritized? Let's say somebody loses their house, they have an RV, they are forced to move into that, do they take priority over other residents, or in the event of perhaps dissolving marriage, one of them needs to leave and move into an RV, are they prioritized?
Yes, Pacifica families and individuals living in Pacifica do have priority.
Okay. And then, in the event that there are some problems with the program, do you have discretion to change your rules for your program in order to address those concerns?
Yeah, we have, we can revoke somebody's permit if they aren't moving forward in their goals and in achieving their goals for housing. We can also, with the city's approval, make adjustments to our Bill of Rights and Code of Conduct. Given that this is a new program, it's based on best practices of other programs that are similar, but there is not one that's like this. So we're sort of in charting new territory here. So we did leave that open so that we can make some adjustments if needed. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we are hiring a safe parking, a Pacifica Safe Parking Permit Coordinator, and that one of the roles of that position is going to be to, to be the liaison with community members. So if something comes up with one of their motorhome neighbors, we hope that they will be reaching out to us so that we can try to alleviate any of those issues and concerns. I truly believe that once this program is actually moving forward, it's gonna alleviate a lot of the challenges that folks in the community are having with these oversized vehicles, because folks who are gonna be in the program, folks who are gonna have these spaces, want to be in the program. They want to move towards housing. And so they want to be good neighbors, and that's what we're trying to give them the opportunity to be.
Would that professional that's working with you there, would they be there to field complaints as well? Will they be on call 24 hours, so that if the police have an issue after normal business hours, that they can divert that complaint towards the...
We're still working that out between that staff person and our direct services manager and myself. It'll probably take different days to be on call, so that it's not one person working, potentially having to work 24/7.
And is there a maximum length for how long someone can be eligible for this program? Can they be entitled for the whole three years?
Theoretically, yes, but our goal is to have them move into housing before that.
And is there a check-in and a checkout procedure, once they're issued this 29-day period, so we can assess the condition of the parking space when they take possession, and how they leave it afterwards?
I suppose, yes, that is what's going to happen. We don't see it in the same way. I think our goal is to have folks individually assessed and oriented to their space, and then on the 29th day, move to the new location. Same thing will happen theoretically, you know, or ideally, we would have 13 people in those 13 spaces, and so every 29 days, there would be a move-in, you know, a move-out, move-in day, and we would orient them to their new location.
Okay, that will do it for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Hauser.
Thank you. I just had one more question, based on Commissioner Leal's questions. So my initial questions were about making sure that we had analyzed kind of the width of the road to make sure that there was safety. And Commissioner Leal asked about, what if someone was over, you know, the minimum width and length? We talked about length, but I don't think we really talked about width. So understanding that vehicles that travel on streets are definitely less than 10 feet wide, will the program ensure that there's not some sort of retrofit, you know, if the vehicle's gonna be there for, let's say, three years, right? That there's not some sort of retrofit that is outside of the 10-foot of width, that then becomes an issue for emergency vehicles and travel lanes? I just wanna, because there wasn't quite a clear answer on whether people would be restricted or not, and we've seen on Oceano when people parked there, a lot of these odd retrofits, including pitched roofs, right? I want to make sure that the width question is something that we've studied.
So the folks have to move every 29 days. So some of those, the things that were happening with folks building out and stuff, I don't anticipate happening, because they'll be having to move every 29 days. So they're not kind of setting up residence in a specific location for three years. We would definitely be checking in with them regularly to make sure that they weren't imposing on the sidewalk or into the right-of-way, because that then sort of defeats the purpose. The goal is not for them, well, the goal is for them to go, return to housing, whatever they decide that's going to be. And it could be staying in their motorhome and moving to an RV, an RV lot. So they may decide to live in their tiny home ongoing, but our goal is to really move them to other housing, right? So they don't have to live in, on the streets, or, you know, well, I guess an RV park still works well for some people, so they still have that option. So, so we would be checking in, my, that's my point, is we would be checking in with them on a regular basis and making sure that none of those things that get in the way of the right-of-way would happen.
Okay. So just, just to reiterate, because our scope is not to amend the program that council has worked on, but our scope is to assess safety. What I think I'm hearing you say is, the Resource Center will work with the city to ensure that there is no retrofit or projection that encroaches outside of the 10-foot width. Did I, did I get that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Commissioner Godwin.
Yeah, I've got to follow up to Commissioner Hauser's question. Many RVs are manufactured with slide-outs, and whenever you park them, they get much wider, because you can extend the RV with the hydraulically for like four feet out. And the standard RV width has gotta be limited to eight and a half feet, so it's legal on the road. But with the slide-out extended, it could be well over 12 feet wide, which is wider than the parking spaces. So have you considered that in your ordinance?
Yes.
Are slide-outs permitted or not permitted at all?
No.
Or what's going on?
Slide-outs, yeah. Slide-outs are not permitted at all.
Okay. Now, one other comment is from these questions, is motorhomes are normally identified by class. It sounds like you have spaces for Class C motorhomes, which are like up to 27, 28 feet, but Class A motorhomes, which can be converted city buses, would obviously extend past the 30-foot length. And then there's small mini and truck campers, which would fit in comfortably. Have you considered limiting the motorhome by space by, by class, to, or classes that would definitely fit? I guess is the right way of asking the question.
Is that a question for the city?
I'll speak on that. In the conversations that I've heard, and all the planning for this, I have never heard of a class. It was always based on, a size based on what was gonna be safe for the location and safe for traffic.
Well, if you talk to motorhome dealers, purchasers, you will soon find that motorhomes are sold by class and advertised by class, and class affects the length of the motorhome. So it'd be worth your while to look into that as a side point. And finally, generators, cabinets in RVs and motorhomes frequently are available for small generators, but many people use an external generator, which is much larger. Are there any limits on external generators in this ordinance versus ones that are designed into the unit initially?
So I think there's probably two answers to that question. The first is, deploying that as personal property off of the vehicle would be prohibited by the program regulations. To whatever extent it's integrated or connected to the vehicle and complied with the space limitations, then the operations would not be limited, other than during the quiet hours currently established in the program.
Well, they're all connected, the external ones at least electrically, to make them valuable. So what do you mean by connected?
I mean physically attached to the vehicle.
Physically attached, the fuel source has to be from the motorhome or something?
Again, I'm not familiar with all of the workings of portable generators, but I think the primary concern in my mind is that it would be deployed in some location outside of the dimensions of the space that's permitted, such as obstructing a sidewalk, for instance, and that would not be allowed under the program.
But I could take an external generator, as long as it's within the 10-foot width space, set it out of the motorhome, connect it electrically, fire it up, and have it run, and that's acceptable within the program?
Well, I think Ms. Reese would need to comment more on whether placement in the street is acceptable or not. What I'm referring to is generators that I've seen on various RVs, connected to some type of cargo rack, for example, on the back of the vehicle, strapped down and some capacity like that. That may or may not be an acceptable operating condition for the generator. It's beyond my scope of knowledge, but that's the type of connection or physical attachment that I'm referring to.
Yeah, that's usually not an operating configuration. That's, again, a transport version. They're typically mounted external to the vehicle and connected. So there are some that are designed in in cabinets, but... Okay, so it sounds like that's a legal thing under this ordinance to carry an external generator and mount it on the ground. So that's my question.
No, it's actually, it wouldn't be allowed unless it was attached, like physically, not sitting on the ground, because folks are not allowed to have any of their property outside the vehicle. So if it was on the rack that, Christian, sorry, that would, that would work. And whether it was functional attached to a cargo rack, I can't speak to that exactly. But if they had to remove it from the cargo rack, then it wouldn't be allowed.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dahmer.
I'd like to get back a little bit into some of the signs that are going to be posted. I'm looking at the example that was given with the information from planning. Do you propose any signs that would have emergency numbers on there? So for people who are living there who may not be from the area, there's a sign for the police, there would be, you know, maybe sign for the city, and phone numbers that they can directly contact if there's some kind of issues. And also signs that would say what that spot is and who to contact if you would like to reserve that spot. I'm just thinking, people from out of town, driving by, you know, I mean, certain people would do their homework and find out if that's available, but other people may not. So I'm not sure what more information that you're planning to do for some of these signs.
Signage that you're proposing wasn't proposed by the applicant. It was just proposed to describe the reservation of the space for the program use. And so maybe I'll invite Director Reese to, or Chief Stidle to comment on if other signage, more informational signage was considered.
So not to my knowledge, there was, I don't believe there was any other informational signage that was considered. This was part of the very, toward the very end of this process, constructing this, these signs we came up with. And the reason for those signs is, the city, or the applicant, wanted the ability to be able to immediately tow or remove a vehicle that was unlawfully parked there, so as not to obstruct that permitted space, that somebody that has the right to park there with the permit. The only way that you can do that under California state law is to create a sign with the information that was placed on this sign, notifying a potential violator that their vehicle will be immediately towed without warning if they park there.
Is it part of the law to require that if your vehicle is towed, call this number to find out where it went? I mean, I've seen that on police.
That's for private property. There, yeah, there's a section of the vehicle code that talks about private property. If you pull into a shopping center, you'll see the vehicle code selection, who to call to get your vehicle, and the police department's phone number.
And so Commissioner Dahmer, if I understand another component of your question, maybe it's something Ms. Reese can speak about, what the pipeline is like, so to speak, of identifying potential program participants. I'm not sure people driving through Pacifica is necessarily the target audience, or that there's any shortage of people identified by the Resource Center, but perhaps touching on that briefly, if Ms. Reese is able and willing to do that. How are folks identified to participate in the program? Is it intended to be, you know, sourced from outside of the community or not, given that the priority anyways is for people displaced within Pacifica, if you will?
I was more concerned by the signage that show numbers for their local police, if there's some challenge or whatever, or the City of Pacifica or whatever, so that there would be numbers that people don't have to try to figure out how to look for that, but it's right on the sign.
I'm wondering if Director Reese can comment on if there's, yeah, a permit that will be hung to just inform the public that that is a valid participant.
Yes, there will be a permit that they'll need to show in the window of the vehicle. And the goal, well, so first, we are conducting outreach now to folks who are in Pacifica, who are living in motorhomes that would be eligible for this program, or oversized vehicles as well, that are eligible for this program, and working with them to make sure that they meet the requirements, so that once we're able to start the program, they'd be able to move in immediately and get the full 29 days. Our goal is to have 13 folks move in at once, it's the easiest thing. And then as people move out, because they're moving into housing, then we would have a new space, and we'd have a waitlist to add the next person in. In the event that there is an open space, and somebody who has an oversized vehicle, they could apply and receive a permit that was a temporary permit. It would allow them to park there for three days legally. They would not have the other benefits of the Safe Parking Program. So the intention was to make sure that every space was used. And there are other oversized vehicles that are not supposed to be on city streets, that are subject to ticketing, and they'd be able to use those spaces if they wanted to. And I suppose people from out of town could as well, but that's not our target. Our target is Pacifica residents, for those extra spaces, should we have them.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yeah, I have a question also for Ms. Reese. Are there any provisions in place for if and, I guess, when there are mechanical issues with these vehicles? We've talked about a 29-day shuffle of 13 RVs. Spent enough time wrenching on vehicles before to know that it's not an if, but a when, one of these is not going to be able to move, and there's going to be someone else lined up needing to take their space. Is there an on-call oversized vehicle towing operation? And then where are you towing these to? Who will be footing the bill for maintenance? Does the cost of that fall on the city? Maybe you could speak to that a little bit.
Sure, we have, we have funds set aside to help with repairs on vehicles as they're needed. And if, in the event that we needed to tow a vehicle, we would more than likely use Miller O'Brien, who's helped us with other programs, and we would pay them. So we would work it out to have that towed to a place that could be repaired, or towed to the next site that they would be, and then work on a repair process for that vehicle so that they can move again, when they have to move it in 29 days.
So you've already retained the services of someone who can tow these sized vehicles around their different places, and then work on them in their, in their new parking spots, is that what I'm understanding?
Well, not necessarily in those parking spaces. We do have a few vendors that work on motorhomes. They aren't in Pacifica necessarily, so we would need to tow it there. But I'm just saying, in the event that our move day, they couldn't move, we would work with Miller O'Brien to move it to the next location, or to a place that it could be repaired, depending on if we know that they aren't movable before, right? Our goal is to make sure that they're able to move on the day that they need to move, and make sure that they're maintained and are functioning.
Yeah, sure, I just, I foresee over a three-year program that this will happen more than once. Is there provision in place for these vehicles, if they get towed, to be worked on outside of the City of Pacifica? Because I've driven around quite a bit, and I don't recall a lot of large vehicle maintenance centers. Is there provision to house these people during such time as their vehicle's under maintenance, potentially for multiple days or a week? You can wait for parts these days for three or four or five weeks?
Right, right. Yeah, we would work that out on a case-by-case basis, but we do have resources available to cover the cost of hotel stays in certain circumstances. And they are also eligible for shelter, so, and we would have them assessed for shelter. So in the event that their vehicle needed to be sent, you're right, not in Pacifica, but there are a couple spots in Redwood City area that do work on motorhomes, we would have it taken there for repairs. And during that time, we would encourage them to use the shelter program. And if not the shelter program, then we would work it out to house them in a hotel.
Thank you, Ms. Great answer.
All right, and last but not least, I have two questions. Most of my questions were answered already, but one question is related to maintenance. This might be for Deputy Director Batista. Given that these will be large vehicles, and oftentimes, when large vehicles are sitting on asphalt, it'll deteriorate the asphalt, is there concern with Public Works on the deterioration in maintenance in the right-of-way?
Sure, that's a great question. And as, you know, as these oversized vehicles move to different locations, or if they become vacant, Public Works will inspect the site to make sure that the, you know, the site is in good condition and for good use.
If, after year one, there's some potholing, some rutting, does Public Works plan to repair the site for preparation for the next year and then the third year?
Right, so we will, as we inspect the site, we'll see what kind of treatments will be needed to make the site suitable.
Okay, thank you. And my last question kind of circles back on Commissioner Ferguson's earlier questions regarding disposal of blackwater, especially because, in my opinion, this is a safety concern. Is there an ability to locate porter potties, like a porter potty nearby, especially this location where, I mean, there is a good amount of right-of-way available? Has that been considered?
So to my knowledge, the requirement for the operable toilet facility was intended to address the sanitation needs. Executive Director Reese can speak more. I think she's tried to communicate that, based on her assessment and research on this issue, that the twice-monthly pumping should be suitable. But she's communicated to me, and perhaps can further clarify, that this program will need to be adaptive and respond to the emerging needs and individual needs of some program occupants, and that her intention, I think, is to be responsive to those needs, and have the twice-monthly pumping, for example, be the floor, and not necessarily the maximum service provided. But she can elaborate on that.
You said it very well. Yes, that's basically, since this is our first time doing this program, and like I said, we don't have really anything to compare it to, we're going to start with this, and then we will adapt as we need to, to make sure that the needs of the folks who are in the program are met, as well as the community's needs are met.
And as to the specific question of portable toilets, you know, that would have a different range of impacts that staff hasn't analyzed, and I would ask that the commission carefully consider whether, you know, to seek to add that tonight, if that were to be their commission's desire. We would likely need to do some further analysis of suitability of such locations, whether the city engineer would be amenable to placement of those toilets in the public right-of-way, and so on.
Thank you. I'm certainly going to defer to the experts. I think Ms. Reese is very knowledgeable and has done a lot of research. If after year one or two, it's determined that it actually may be very beneficial to have a porter potty in a more accessible location to these parking spots, is that something that would have to come back to Planning Commission?
Conceivably, it could, if the placement of those portable toilets, for example, constituted development and required a coastal development permit. It's possible that it may not. Again, that's a fact-specific analysis that the staff has not undertaken and would need to undertake. I wouldn't think necessarily that it would be limited to an amendment to these existing permits. It could be its own permit if that requirement was necessary, but again, those are issues we haven't fully analyzed at this time.
Would it be, and maybe it's unnecessary at this point, but would it be a beneficial idea to add a condition of approval that said to the discretion of the Public Works Director or the Planning Director? Should additional sanitation facilities be required, that they can be located to the discretion of the Planning Director and the Public Works Director?
I mean, possibly, I think, you know, from a condition of approval standpoint, I don't think we should condition items that have impacts that wouldn't fall within the umbrella of the analysis that's been performed. I think, you know, outside portable toilets may have a different range of impacts than we've considered for the operation of recreational vehicles that have functional, you know, as-designed sanitation systems. And so it's something we haven't analyzed for the range of impacts, as to whether they'd be consistent with policies in such a way that could be approved. And so I would ask that you kindly defer to the managers of the program, if the need arises, to then take the appropriate steps to address that. Perhaps it's increased pumping, perhaps it's some other solution, it's hard to say specifically.
Okay, thank you. That's fair to say, and I appreciate the response. Commissioner Wright.
Just a quick question for our Chief of Police. Would you say that it's safe to assume that this program will have a net positive effect on public safety in Pacifica?
Yeah, I absolutely believe that is the case. I think that, you know, there's, having a program constructed like this, where these folks that are forced to live in their vehicles have a safe place where you go, if you will, that's designed. We know based on the analysis that it's safe to park their vehicle in those areas, based on the size of their vehicles, if they're going to be held to a certain Code of Conduct, where certain things will be allowed and certain things will not be allowed, which will certainly mitigate some of the quality of life issues that currently exist, or we currently receive complaints about, in our neighborhoods where there are some oversized vehicles parking, such as the trash, or people setting up encampments, if you will, outside of their vehicle. Those type of things won't be allowed. So being that it's such a structured program, I think that, in my opinion, it provides a safe environment for the neighborhoods, as well as the people that are living within their recreational vehicles.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson.
I have a question, I believe it's for the city's attorneys. We're used to usually hearing applicants who are either private developers or private citizens within the City of Pacifica, and we often deliberate on, you know, hundred-year storm catch basins, things of this nature, for potential mitigation of future issues arising from a property or a development. In this case, I guess it's an odd situation, where the city is the applicant, is my understanding. If you were to have a situation where there was a spill, say it was blackwater, or gasoline, or oil, and that spill was subject to some environmental or other litigation, would it be the city's liability as the applicant for this program for cleanup, or any mitigation associated with something that happened around these sites?
Well, it would depend on how the circumstances have arisen, and what the city's knowledge would be at the time that such a circumstance would occur. So it's difficult to give an answer.
I guess, yes or no question, is there an opportunity for risk for the city, from a labral perspective?
Well, in approving a permit, there is always some risk of exposure. Well, in approving a permit, there is always some risk of exposure that comes along with that.
Okay.
Commissioner Ferguson, I can offer perhaps a non-legal response to your question. So the issue of what are known as illicit discharges are familiar to the city. The Public Works Department has a procedure for responding to them. And in conjunction with either the Police Department or the code enforcement officer attempt to identify the party responsible for the illicit discharge to ensure that they're held accountable, and we attempt to recover the expenses of the cleanup response. So I think to that end, there is a mechanism that's routine for the city for addressing illicit discharges and trying to identify the responsible parties. As to whether the city as a permit holder would incur any specific liability, again, as you noted, that's a legal question for the city attorney's office. It's probably beyond the scope of tonight's hearing, and it sounds like it's beyond the ability of the Assistant City Attorney to answer, given the general nature.
Yeah, bringing up, because it seems like the city has directed these to some very specific locations, right? This has been a city process from the start to finish. They've identified exact intersections and locations, some of them in pretty protected waterways. So just something I wanted to understand.
Well, I think to that end, through the program requirements, the city has taken diligent measures to ensure serviceability in inspecting these vehicles in partnership with the Resource Center. And so I think we can't prevent every potentiality of an illicit discharge, but I think reasonable prudent measures are included in the program to help diminish the potential for that.
Understood.
Commissioner Wright.
It's, is it safe to assume that the program does require insurance on the part of these occupants for their vehicles? And therefore, would that not be defer some of that liability from the city towards that insurance company?
So I can't speak as to what the insurance would cover, but yes, the vehicles must have automobile insurance to be part of the program.
Commissioner Domaret.
I think we could see from a lot of the questions that the commissioners are asking that, you know, there's a lot of debate still going on with what could or might happen. Has the city required a formalized lesson learned process, like at the end of year one, we will reassess and then make changes based on that, or at the end of year three, prior to extending any program, that there will be a formal process to review and make improvements?
Sure. So again, the Planning Department staff hasn't been involved in the detailed program development. Perhaps Executive Director Reese can speak to what's intended to be, to my understanding, a cooperative relationship between the city and the Resource Center as the program manager. And I would have to imagine that there's an opportunity to revisit as needed, not necessarily just on an annual basis, but as required, to make sure that the program requirements are true to the requirements of the legal settlement, but also incorporating real-world lessons to ensure that, you know, the issues and impacts that are intended to be mitigated by the program, you know, are adequately addressed. But beyond that, I think Ms. Reese will need to speak to those points.
Yes, we will make adjustments as needed. Some of them require us checking in with the city, some are things that we can, you know, tweak on our own. In addition, we plan at probably a year and a half in, we plan to have an independent evaluation of the program to further document, you know, lessons learned and make additional adjustments as needed.
Great, thank you.
All right. Well, just a reminder, we will be taking the applicant's, I guess, spiel, and we will have an opportunity for more questions. And then I do have some public comments here, and then we will have another opportunity for deliberation. But Commissioner Wright, did you have another question?
I can wait.
Okay, great. Then I'll leave it up to the applicant, Mr. Batista, to present. And so similar to usual, they have 10 minutes. They could leave three minutes for rebuttal, correct?
Correct. And it would just help to formalize that you are opening the public hearing.
Oh, I am, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing further to add to this discussion, but I'm happy to answer any of the questions.
And Chair Berman, as it relates to public comment, I did want to mention that the commission has received a hand-delivered written comment from a member of the public, seemingly intended to apply to all three public hearings on CDPs this evening. So for the record, we have received that and distributed it to the commission.
Thank you. And Mr. Murdock, you have a copy as well for the record?
We do.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Or I think we're good for now. Okay, then, opening public comment. And I will call your name and then remind me, do I typically call the next person up so they could get ready as well?
Yes, often the chair will say, you know, Speaker One, to be followed by Speaker Two, please be ready. It helps facilitate efficient, if they make their way to the podium, for their opportunity.
Okay, thank you. And apologies in advance if I mispronounce your name, I'm sorry. So first speaker will be Lindy Quoc, and after Lindy will be, I believe it's Jim Canders, will be second. So Ms. Quoc, if you're here, please come up to the microphone, state your name for the record. And you have three minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. Before you go, let me read. Sorry. Or, yeah, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lindy Quoc, and this is my first council meeting, so forgive me for not knowing the rules on how to approach this. I'm sorry that not that many Fairway Park residents showed up tonight, but a lot of them, especially the homeowners, were concerned about the potential RV parking spaces. We feel as though preferential treatment will be given to the unhoused or those who elect to own an RV and not pay property taxes when preferential treatment should be given to us homeowners who do pay property taxes and tax dollars to support the city. Another reason why a lot of the homeowners oppose this development is for safety reasons. So who are these people who become program participants? How do they become eligible for this? Do you check their background? Do they come from shady backgrounds? Mr. Batista, would you like to comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. So thank you for your comment. It's not a back and forth.
I got it.
But we received your comment.
Okay.
And yeah, if you're done, then that will be it.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
You can, but you will not get a response.
Okay. Well, I guess my question on behalf of the homeowners is at what phase is this proposed development? Do we have the option of appealing it and petitioning for it? That's my comment.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And so Mr. Canders, I believe it's Jim, you are up next. And then following him will be Tim Isinkard. Apologies for that.
Well, I'm a taxpayer here in this city, and there's not going to be no answer for me here tonight if you won't answer our questions. So this meeting's all about you guys, even though we pay the taxes here.
Whatever.
All right, thank you. Tim, I'm sorry. Please, can you please state your last name for the record? Thank you.
Chair Berman, perhaps before the gentleman starts, we could clarify that the commission receives any questions or comments made by the public and can ask those of the staff once the public hearing is closed. But the structure of the public hearing is not such that the planning commissioners can engage in a dialogue with the commenters at the time of their comments. So the questions are valuable, it's just not an active dialogue at the time the comments are being made.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Murdock. You stated it better than I did. So it is not an active dialogue, but we do receive your comments. And then during our deliberation, once public comment is closed, we could re-ask your questions. Go ahead.
So, good evening, Commissioner. My name's Tim Blanchard, 38-year resident of Pacifica, Fairway Park resident. I'm opposed to this plan. I've been opposed prior to the COVID. I've brought it up many times. There's many RVs with leaking blackwater tanks. There's RVs that have been parked for about six years now across the Department of Public Works. One of those has a leaking blackwater tank. Nothing is done about this. Secondly, your little trial program, probably around March it was, you had RVs parked out there. You had a Class A, which is a bus-size RV. It had the slides out, they were in the street, okay? Secondly, there was another vehicle there, it was hit. It was too far up to the turn on the street there of Bradford. It was rear-ended. The blackwater tank was on the ground. Also, the police department is over there almost daily, okay? So not happy with this situation at all. You don't take into the considerations of the people that live here in Pacifica, that work here, that have paid the taxes, paid your salaries and wages here for years. You just run with your own agenda. I would really like to know, I know you won't put your hands up, how many of you would have this program next to your neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Thompson?
Yes, that's me. I'm Allison Thompson. I live in Fairway Park. I've been a resident of Pacifica for over 30 years, and I have three small children. They're all under the age of 10. And I just wanted to express my objection to the idea that there could be safe parking at these two spots on Bradford Way. As the gentleman before me just mentioned, and as I'm sure the Chief of Police is also fully aware, we did try a couple of months ago, we ran a little, I guess, test to see how it would work having two RVs parked right there on Bradford Way, right where there's an exit for Highway One, right where it's very dark, right where there's also an exit for the golf course. And there ended up being a vehicle collision, all right? So we tried that, we saw what happened. I'm also deeply concerned about the safety for my daughters as they're walking around in the neighborhood. So I just hope that as you're considering the safety for the parking, we consider the safety of the RV dwellers and the fact that that area is prone to collisions. It's not that wide of a street, in fact. And there's a corner right there, and it's just not great visibility. So I just wanted to express that. Thank you. And I really appreciate the Commissioners Ferguson, Wright, Liel, Godwin, great thoughts. And also, we should consider the fact that if you're being forced to live out of an RV, you probably don't have the money to spend on solar panels. That would be like $5,000 that you probably wouldn't have. You probably wouldn't have money to cover damage to the street from blackwater, and you probably wouldn't be that concerned about all of the smells that would be coming from at least two weeks of water. So I think that that's worth considering as well as you're making your decision. And then, yeah, I think that that's all. The safety of the children, the safety of the people that want to live in the RVs, and the safety for all of the people in Pacifica that drive past that little spot on Bradford Way thousands of times each day, back and forth. Thanks so much, guys.
Thank you. I don't have any new note cards, but I'm wondering, staff, given that my response on how the public comment process goes, and, you know, we're all getting used to being back in person, may I be able to give Mr. Canders another opportunity at public comment?
It's the chair's prerogative.
Okay. Mr. Canders, if you'd like to give a comment, okay. Okay, so that's a no. All right, thank you. Closing public com-
I'm sorry, Chair. We have one member on the phone that has raised their hand. Caller with the last four digits, 8268. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
And Chair Berman, will you clarify for the record that you did not close the public hearing?
I did not close the public hearing because we have callers.
Yeah. And commenter, please start by identifying yourself. It appears that you are unmuted. I believe you can start speaking.
I guess Ms. O'Connor, are there any other call-in commenters? We could give the first one a moment.
No, there's not. We only had one hand raised and one member of the public on the phone, other than Director Caller with the last four digits, 8268, please try talking.
Hello, can you hear me?
There we go. Yes, we do. Thank you.
Oh, oh, finally. Thank you so much. I've appreciated listening to all the work that's gone into this. My name is Paige Saunders. I live on Bradford Way in Fairway Park. I've lived here a decade or so, and I live very near where the two RVs are going to be parked. And so it feels like this is my neighborhood that they're going to be in, and I have safety concerns that I echo from previous speakers about folks who would be in the RVs who don't rent or own real property, pay the property taxes, don't have children in school here, and that they would be able to stay near my home. And I'm just wondering, as another person spoke up about what kind of, how do they get a permit or their background checks, et cetera? And that I feel that the huge RVs are a real eyesore in front of our beautiful golf course and in our neighborhood. And if porter potties are added, that would just be horrible. I take Sharp Park to turn to my house every day, and when they were parked there earlier this year, it just really was depressing to see them every day when I went toward my home. And so I'm very vehemently opposed to this, and I know I speak for others in my neighborhood. And also, another thing that happened with these RVs is I could not see around an RV. I had to cross the center line, and I, you know, I couldn't see any oncoming traffic if it had been coming. Fortunately, it wasn't, but that's a real safety concern for me also. And I'm also concerned that more than two RV spots would be added. And, you know, it's just, it affects my neighborhood, and I'm very concerned. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connor, are there any other call-in comments?
No, there are not.
All right. I will close public comment and give the floor back to Mr. Batista for a rebuttal.
So the first speaker, I might have to defer these questions to Director Reese, Executive Director Reese, to answer these questions regarding who are these people and how are they, you know, interviewed and what phase of the development? So can I direct it to?
Did you want to respond to any of the other ones?
We'll just do that for now. So we'll do those first three questions.
Okay. Ms. Reese, if you're available, do you mind answering the questions?
Sure. Yes, so folks who are awarded a permit do need to go through an assessment that's done by our staff. Our Safe Parking Permit Program Coordinator will be the one to make the final determination. We do, you know, a thorough review of their circumstances, and they need to have a commitment to returning to housing. That's one of the key conditions of the program. That's one of the key conditions of the program. It's not just a safe parking place. That's the first part of the program. That's the thing that allows people to work on the issues that have led to them becoming homeless. But we will be providing intensive case management, working towards their housing goals. Some of those things are going to be considering where they, you know, a very individualized housing plan based on where they want to live, what their goals are for housing, which may include moving out of this area. It may include renting a room. So, looking at all of those factors, but the core is going to be that they have an eligible vehicle that meets the requirements of the program and that they are working towards their housing goal. So, we'll be, each case is going to be considered on a case-by-case basis, so there isn't any cookie cutter type of person who's going to be in the program. And I'm trying to see back what the other questions were. And then, in terms of the phase of this development, that's really a question for the city, probably the city manager, because my understanding is this is something that needs to move forward based on the lawsuit that was settled, and it needs to be implemented by the end of June. So, I don't know whether or not there are other, any other opportunities to change this in terms of being able to, us needing to move forward. The settlement included 13 spaces, and while those spaces can move to other locations, I believe that the city has gone and tried to find the most ideal spots, and this is, these are the spots that they have determined will work best for this program. But we were not part of that discussion. We're implementing the program, not necessarily making the decisions about where those spaces are going to be.
One of the other comments that I heard was about the black water and safety. So, at Public Works, we do, if there's any incident, we do, you know, respond. So, we're out in, like anywhere in the city. If there happens to be a spill, it'll discharge. We're out there. And in terms of the safety of these spots, the engineer who went and out and did the build verifications also took into consideration such as lines of sight. So, you know, we made sure that these spots were safe.
Is there anything else? I think you still have time, Mr. Batista. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think I addressed most of the comments that were brought up.
Okay. Then, I will bring it back to the Commission for deliberation. Commissioner Wright.
I just had an additional follow-up question. I was wondering what data is being collected on this program to both enhance public safety and to help make the program more successful and help us try to figure out how it is that it can be made better over time? And does that include the background checks and sex offender status and things like that to address the concerns of the public?
I will invite Director Reese to maybe respond to that.
So, in terms of the data that's being collected in general for the program, one of our biggest outcomes is going to be how many folks return to housing. So, that's our main focus, and there's, you know, what kinds of services are folks going to be receiving? Or take us up on how often do we need to help people repair vehicles? What are the barriers for them to return to housing? Income, increasing their income so that they can cover those costs. So, very specific to moving people towards housing is our focus around programmatically to figure out what supports that we are planning to offer result in our ultimate goal, which is helping folks return to housing. At the same time, as addressing the safety issues and concerns that the community has around garbage and black water, gray water waste, and all of those things, because again, I believe that once folks are in this program, these are folks who want to be in this program. These are folks who are trying to return to housing, and so, their goal is to be, and our goal is to make sure that they are good neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hauser?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to reiterate some of the questions that the community members asked while they're still here, so that maybe they can hear a little bit more of the answer to the questions that they had. So, I guess my first question is, a couple of members of the community talked about this temporary parking program, and I want to understand if the two spaces that are proposed are in the same spot as the temporary parking, sorry, the test program? So, are the two spots we're proposing here on Bradford in the same spots as the test program?
To be quite honest with you, I am not aware of any test program that occurred.
Okay, there has not-
Yeah, neither am I. There wasn't any official test program.
Okay, that's helpful information. And so, any comment pertaining to like the bus with the slides out, I don't know the RV terminology, but all of the kind of items that we just talked about, it was not part of a city program?
I don't think any of the staff are aware of that.
Sorry, Mr. Murdock.
Please, Ms. Reese, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say that those motorhomes that were on Francisco near Bradford were not part of any program that we were using, or we have not started the program. So, those folks were parking there on their own, and if they were in our program, then they would not have been using the slide outs, and they would have been in the marked spaces.
And then, I think my other question that was asked by the community was, what was the appeal process? I'd love to get an understanding of that.
Sure. So, the permit tonight, whatever action the Planning Commission takes on it is subject to appeal to the City Council. There's a 10-day appeal period following tonight's meeting, assuming that the Planning Commission takes an action on the permit. And this location is also subject to appeal to the California Coastal Commission. And so, following any potential appeal by the City Council, or in the event that no appeal is filed by someone to the City Council, in either case, there is an appeal opportunity to the California Coastal Commission, and that would allow them to make the final determination on the permit.
Okay. And then, my last question that kind of came through the public comment was, I think I, the litigation is pertinent. I think I'd like to understand what obligation we have as a commission or the city has as part of this lawsuit to make a decision in a timely manner, and like, what must we do?
It is pertinent.
So, Vice Chair Hauser, I will say that we don't necessarily have all of the details of the settlement readily available tonight, but in general terms, there are a number of obligations for the city, a number of demonstrable discreet steps the city must take in order to implement and execute this program. Some of them have due dates in May, and some have due dates in June. My recollection, but I cannot confirm, is that the city's required action to obtain the coastal development permits is required to be completed by the end of May, is my recollection. And so, in the event that there's an appeal process or so forth, you know, that's beyond the city's control, and we would have to address that, you know, with the plaintiff's counsel in the event that they had concerns about the timeline. But as long as the city's making a good faith effort and attempts to get the action on the permit by the end of May, I believe that would be compliant with that particular component of it. Beyond that, you know, as we've discussed in general terms, the city is obligated to identify 13 safe parking program spaces and to take the steps necessary to enact the program, including partnering with the Resource Center for the program management and so on. And so, that's, this is one of several specific steps that the city is obligated to take under the settlement.
So, I don't want to make any presumptions on what deliberations will lead to, but if there was some sort of desire by this commission as an appointed body of the city to continue this or get more information or whatever, would we be in violation? Or would we be hindering the city, would we be hindering ourselves in this legally described process?
I will just take a moment to make sure that that's correct. But if the commission doesn't take timely action, yes, there is potential imperil of the city's litigation posture.
And a timely action would not be any action that we make, but a requirement to find 13 parking spaces.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hauser. Commissioner Lille?
Thank you. I just have a couple of clarifying questions about the three-years term. So, can I get, or can we get more information around the, kind of what happens at the end of the three term, three years? Does it come back, do these parking places come back to the Planning Commission, or kind of what happens at the end of the three years?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Lille. So, the city, to my knowledge, has committed as part of the settlement to operate this program for a period of three years. The City Council could potentially take action to extend the program longer than three years. I would say that the city was not predisposed to such a program prior to the litigation. So, anybody's guess if the council at the end of three years would want to continue the program in the current locations and different locations, I don't know. That's speculative. As it's planned now to be a three-year temporary safe parking program, the conditions of approval would require, quote-unquote, the decommissioning of the space, you know, the removal of the pavement markings and the signage at the end of the three years, and the program would terminate, and there would be no further safe parking program at the end of the three years as contemplated currently.
Okay, thank you. And then, my second question around the timing is when the clock starts and if it's on a per approval basis? So, would the clock start on these two at a certain time and then another two at a certain time depending on what's in the permits? Or is it like the program starts on this date once the first RV parks, and then it ends 1,000 some odd days from then, whatever three years is?
The program technically, in our timeline, begins implementation from back in February, so that's-
Okay. So, we're already in the three-year period?
My apologies. I don't believe we are in the three-year period as of yet until this is finalized.
Okay.
So, I don't know the answer, Commissioner Lille, whether it's a per-space start to three years, and could there be a staggered start and thus a staggered finish? I don't know the answer to that. In any case, I would expect the start of each space to coincide relatively closely with all the other spaces, and so, from a three-year horizon, I don't know that there's meaningfully much difference, but I don't know specifically the answer to your question.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So, I can-
Go ahead.
Sorry. Yeah, my understanding is that the three-year time clock does not start until we start the program, and the program won't be started, at least at this time, until end of June, based on the lawsuit required that the program be implemented by the end of May, but because we needed to get these permits, it got extended to begin by the end of June. And as Mr. Murdoch shared, you know, there is a possibility of having that start point extended if we needed more time, but that would be something that would need to be discussed with the plaintiffs to approve that extension.
Thank you for that clarification. So, I wanted to kind of touch on some of the comments made by the public around public safety, and I was curious, I was going to ask Police Chief, if we have any, if there's any data related to incidents with RVs parked, specifically parked, if we have any traffic data or incidents that either was referenced by the public tonight or counts or anything that we may have?
So, we don't have any specific data, if you will. What I can tell you is, in terms of incidents that we have regarding folks living in recreational vehicles, they're often the same type of incidents we have with people living in houses. They have arguments, they have, you know, other issues that come to law enforcement attention. There have been occasions where we've had some folks that definitely had some incidents that had to do with mental health issues, but again, we also have those same type of incidents with people that are living in more traditional housing. In terms of the vehicles, the oversized vehicles tend to draw a little bit more public attention, if you will, for complaints. The community is very well aware of the 72-hour ordinance and continually complains about being parked longer than the 72 hours. I would say the 72-hour violations or the alleged violations, we have to check on them, are probably the biggest draw on law enforcement resources in terms of the oversized vehicles that are parked in the city. I would tend to believe from my expertise that that's, if that's the biggest problem that we're having, that's not too bad. In terms of the collision that was referenced, that wasn't just a normal collision. I don't recall all of the details, but that was actually a criminal event that occurred out there.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I, my, I was specifically looking for like vehicular collisions related to RVs and that, not necessarily like domestic items or-
I'm aware of that one. I'm also aware of, it was documented as a collision, it was a fatal a couple of years ago, but that was, that had nothing to do with where the vehicle was parked, it had to do with an accident and somebody hitting an accelerator and crushing somebody that was working on the vehicle. So, that could have happened anywhere that vehicle was parked.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I'm aware of that one. That one, I believe, occurred, if we're thinking of the same one, it occurred right over there on Palmetto, and in a similar space, if not the same exact space, also another, I guess, I guess it would be a small school bus lit up in flames not too long ago. And all of these incidents also occurred within the past three years. So, just thinking of kind of the past three years, predicting the next three years, granted, these are different terms because we're intent, it's more a regulated program, so it's safer. I was thinking of, okay, well, how can we make these spaces, given the position we're in, the city needs to provide 13 spaces? How can we put these spaces in the best places that are not only safe for the public, respectful to existing residents of Pacifica, but also safe for the tenants as well? And so, as I was looking at this location, one of which I travel often on my bicycle with my son to baseball fields, as well as walk the dog and back and forth between Maripoint, many times we're in actually the lane of traffic, which at certain parts of Bradford Way, I believe, is a parking lane, but then also, it, the width of Bradford Way expands and contracts depending on what section you are. So, if you're on the northern end where it hits Sharp Park and Francisco, you're in the right-hand portion of that road, which then, with these parking places, you'll need to veer to the left to avoid the parking lane, to be in the left hand of the left side of the 20 feet. But there's no designation in the road that the driver needs to do that. There's also never anyone parked on the right-hand side here. Now, "never" is a strong word, so I've never seen anyone parked here other than RVs parked there previously, I think where the public was referencing those locations. So, my initial comments tonight, as we deliberate, are I would like to see some additional roadway improvements as part of this project, because it is going to change traffic of how people are currently traversing not only bicycles but also vehicles, this path of roadway, as well as additional no parking signs to clarify where you cannot park here. There's no red curb anywhere, and the road does go from 20 feet to 10 feet as you move further south. So, I would like to see, and if it's within our purview, potentially conditions of approval, to have additional roadway improvements along those lines, and we'd definitely defer to city staff on what those should be, but I would like to include those just to make sure that, given that those who drive on this roadway often, their behavior will be changed with the addition of these parking places because no one ever parks there. And so, people probably drive down the middle of the lane, which they won't be able to do any longer after this. My last point on this one in terms of roadway improvements is, south of these parking My last point on this one in terms of roadway improvements is south of these parking places, there is also where it does constrict, given that, my comment earlier where I do suspect folks participating in the program to have multiple vehicles due to going to their job, it's probably unlikely they'll be moving their RV every day. So there's one over by, currently, the Little Brown Church, which I know has additional vehicles associated with the RV that parks over there. We want to make sure that for them, they're parking their additional vehicles in legal spaces, where the roadway is 20 feet wide, so it could accommodate those. And given that the roadway width is poorly marked on Bradford Way and it changes, I'd like to see those additional improvements on that roadway for public safety. So those are my initial comments now. I'll let my other fellow commissioners deliberate, but thank you.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yeah, to expand on my earlier comments, I did a quick Google search on Class C motorhomes. Their lengths are between 25 and 35 feet, so the spaces you've designated are too small. A Class A motorhome, on the other hand, is 45 feet, up to 45 feet long, and that will not fit in one of your spaces either. There also can be much higher, if my memory serves me correctly, is 14 feet high for Class A. I do not recall the height for Class C. The vast majority of motorhomes sold are Class C. There are also Class B camper vans and truck campers, which are more limited, which would fit in your spaces. So you need to do something with defining these spaces, either make this one space at Bradford Lane and you can accommodate the full gamut of motorhomes, or make it two and limit the types of motorhomes pretty drastically to ones that are not, only a tiny minority, the motorhomes. So more work needs to be done to deal with, understand the motorhome population of vehicle types and provide the appropriate spaces. Also, as a former motorhome owner-driver, the typical camping place offers what's called a pull-through space, which allows you to drive without reversing and backing up, because most people don't drive their motorhomes a lot, especially if you're moving them once a month. And you need to provide some additional space for each motorhome operator, if they're not that skilled, to, or if they're towing something at some point, which probably is not applicable here, but to give them some additional room to maneuver the motorhome. So I really think 60 feet's more like one space. Not at all comfortable approving two spaces. Do you have some comments? Either Mr. Batista or...
I think, you know, I think part of the, part of the solution might be just making sure the types of OSVs are allowed to park in certain spaces and then see what, you know, to see what other backup space, or if there is some clearance, you know, to see, you know, just to verify lengths and make sure that there's enough length there to accommodate these different types of classes. But, you know, we would work with the PRC in order to make sure that spaces fit and make sure that, you know, overall that everything's safe.
I would just add to that, maybe, that 30 feet was proposed and is what is being described in this coastal development permit. As Director Reese has touched on before, this is a new program, and really learning the ins and outs of what's working and what's not working will be kind of discovered as we go through. So should the director find that she is turning away potential applicants or potential participants due to their vehicle being too large to fit these spaces, that might be the time that PRC comes back or talks to the city about revising the CDP to, you know, address that length issue.
Thank you.
I do see Commissioner Ferguson has a comment or question, but just because it touches off of this conversation. If this item is approved and proceeds, and then if Ms. Reese determines that the parking spots need to be larger, what happens then? Do we have to come back to commission?
I would say that the definition of the project description that you're considering now is, has dimension information associated with it. So if the program is proposing to do something broader than that, I would say that would be outside of the scope of what you're approving, and an amendment would probably be appropriate.
Yeah, I think I would agree in many cases, you know, similar to development projects that the commission approves that may have dimensions and setbacks, occasionally there are needs to make minor adjustments to that. And the planning director typically uses some discretion in determining what's a major and what's a minor change. And so, you know, should there be a need to make a minor adjustment, I think it's conceivable that the planning director might interpret that consistent with the commission's original approval. But if there was a substantial change, just hypothetically, you know, 50% or 75% expansion of length to allow, you know, the Class A motorhomes that Commissioner Godwin's been describing, that's likely to be a significant and substantial change that would likely prompt an amendment to the permit. So I don't want to commit to you on the record that if it was 31 feet instead of 30, that we would trigger a permit revision. I think there is a judgment call to be made, and substantial conformance with the approved permit is typically the standard for that judgment call by staff.
Okay. Is there anything that we should do if we do proceed for a motion and approval? Should we consider that in the record or just leave it to the discretion of the planning director?
Well, I think I would ask Ms. Sharma for her input. I think, you know, the commission could seek to circumscribe staff's discretion if there was a reason to do that that's founded in a rational basis. I would argue as staff to please not do that because there are real-world considerations that come up that could practically obstruct implementation of this program if some minor deviation was needed. And so I'd just ask the commission to consider that. I don't know if Ms. Sharma has further thoughts.
I would agree the commission has some ability to constrain the discretion of staff going forward if the commission chooses to do so.
Okay. Noted.
And I would just maybe further ask, you know, Mr. Batista if he has concerns about potentially increasing the length of any of these spaces that are under consideration tonight in this or the other public hearings. I don't know that specific technical analysis has been completed to allow them to be expanded, but again, to use the similarity to a development project, right, the commission can adjust setbacks, maybe allow a slightly greater floor area or a slightly greater height for a structure as a consideration when making the findings. And so perhaps, you know, the commission could consider that if Mr. Batista, in his role as a city engineer, you know, thought that that could be done safely, or at least provide some parameters that staff could consider in the field when doing the final striping and designation of the spaces, for instance.
Right. And just to add a little information regarding the OSVs, you know, the 30-foot length was kind of considered by staff because it was an average OSV that we, you know, that was out in the field, you know, here in Pacifica. 30 feet looked, especially like the OSVs that are parked over, over at the corporation yard, 30 feet seemed like the average length. But as Deputy or Acting Director Murdoch just said, I mean, if it's not a substantial, substantial length, you know, I don't think that it would be, I don't think it should be limited at that point, you know, it's, whatever, whatever you consider is not substantial versus substantial. But I think as, you know, as these OSVs come out, and like I said, we would work with PRC and see where the proper space for these OSVs would be and observe or actually just inspect the length, you know, we definitely could find a solution.
And Chair Berman, if you would allow, Commissioner Godwin, would you just please restate the maximum length of a Class B motorhome in your estimation?
The Class B, I did not say, because they're basically truck campers and camper vans that are smaller. I can tell you a Class C, which is the most common one sold, is 25 to 35 feet long.
Okay.
Is what the legal definition of...
Pardon me, I was intending to...
Or the marketing definition of it, and the Class A is up to 45 feet.
Okay. I misspoke. I was intending to ask about the Class C, which was the 35-foot and the most common. And so, you know, perhaps allowing these spaces to be up to 35 feet if determined to be safe, is determined by the city engineer, might allow a more effective program implementation and maybe a broader range of vehicles, that or potentially some sort of buffer space.
If I can interject one point here, having driven one of these quite a number of times, you need a little turning radius when you put it into a space. Having a 35-foot space that your RV barely fits into is really not adequate at all and certainly unsafe. So I don't know what the proper dimension is. I don't have it written down, but it's, it's definitely in excess of 35 feet for the most common models.
Yeah, it's the number of spaces.
So Chair Berman, I just want to clarify one fact first and then maybe present something else for the commission to consider. Earlier, we talked about the implementation deadline in response to Vice Chair Hauser's question. We've confirmed the implementation deadline for the city to obtain the coastal development permits for these spaces is May 29th. And so that would, any continuance this evening, for example, would push the city beyond the May 29th deadline, given the planning commission's next meeting is June 6th. As to, again, Commissioner Godwin's concerns, we are not aware of a legal reason, under the terms of the settlement, why the city needs to delineate two distinct spaces of 30 feet each. You know, if the applicant was open to it and thought that it was safe and could be managed in the right of way, perhaps the space could be a single continuous space of 60 feet for not more than two RVs or OSVs, and provide some flexibility to match a longer vehicle with a shorter one, or provide that flexibility within the spaces. You know, there may be some inherent program management challenges, given, you know, one vehicle hogging the space and parking in the middle. I don't know all of those details, but I think the general concept could probably be articulated in a condition of approval, for example, and maybe get to the heart of what Commissioner Godwin's talking about a little bit better than simply increasing the space from 30 to 35 or to 40 or what have you, providing that flexibility. But it's just a thought, and maybe Mr. Batista could comment if the commission's interested in exploring that.
I agree with what Acting Director Murdoch just said, you know, it will take coordination between PRC and the city, and just being trying to be flexible with the OSVs, and it is going to be, you know, like a fitting puzzle together, right? So it definitely, you know, just providing the flexibility and hoping to make sure that we can get the right vehicle at the right space. So that's part of the solution.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Ferguson, thank you for letting us insert that discussion.
Absolutely. First, I guess a question as it pertains specifically to these sites and then some general commentary for the commission. A question was prior to, prior to this, where obviously the program's not implemented yet, is overnight parking on Bradford Way allowed for the 72-hour period, or is there no, it's not a red curb, but...
There's no prohibition on overnight parking.
So it's essentially a free-for-all right now on Bradford Way?
Yes, any of those vehicles could park in that area where OSVs are allowed on Bradford Way for as long as they don't violate the 72-hour rule. They may park overnight.
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be then a new implementation of this neighborhood to have OSV parking here? It would just be regulation on that. My commentary, I guess, I understand there's sort of culturally and socially, there's an obligation here to address this issue. Also, there's apparently a legal obligation, and we have to do it tonight, which, odd that we're hearing about that for the first time now. It feels like you're kind of under the gun and don't even know that you're walking into that. Maybe we can address that better in the future, but maybe we didn't have any opportunity, so that is what it is. So understanding that that's the case, I guess nobody wants this in their neighborhood, right? There's nobody that's begging to have regulated OSV parking in their neighborhood, myself included. It's just for understandable reasons, right? But it's going to be somewhere, and if not here, but then where? The only thing I think about when I, as I deliberate this in my head is, you know, I travel the Bay Area for work all the time, put in a lot of windshield miles. You look at cities like Oakland, San Jose, San Francisco, you see the blight of this kind of unregulated OSV parking everywhere. But if you go to other cities in San Mateo County, for example, you drive down to Burlingame, Menlo Park, Atherton, you won't see this anywhere. So I'm having a hard time grappling with why we have a legal requirement to do this and sanction it, but I guess that ship has sailed, so I guess here tonight we have to decide, we either accept some civil penalty that we don't know about, or we approve this permit. Is that, my understanding is correct? Does someone confirm that?
Just want to confirm that the reason we are, one of the reasons we're here today is because of a lawsuit against the City of Pacifica in particular.
Right.
And if we, if the commission does not take their requisite action based on the settlement agreement, that that would imperil the city's legal position, and the locations have been selected by the city council, have been before the council at a number of public hearings by this point.
Understood. I just wanted to enter that in the record.
Commissioner Domaret.
It seems like based on the information we heard today about Class A through Class C and so forth, is there, is it appropriate, you know, so we're looking only at five of the 13 required spaces tonight, correct?
Six. This item is only two of the 13, but other items...
There were three, three files. One has two, another one has two, the other one has one, so that's five of the spaces. I believe there's 13 spaces, correct? So is it appropriate to look at the others that we're not looking at tonight to maybe look at more flexibility in the size and have it that if you have a size greater than 40 feet, you're going to have to go somewhere at another one of our sites? And if that analysis has been done, maybe you don't need to do it for these five we're looking at tonight, but the other remaining ones, maybe there's more flexibility and say that the much larger ones can go to into an area that can handle a larger size. So maybe that's something you could do, put into the plan. The other thing I think we really need to work more closely with these communities to assure that background checks are going to be done, that we're not going to be having, you know, a lot of criminal element coming in, that these, you know, I mean, I think the neighborhoods need to be assured of that. So whatever we can do to assure them of that, I think they'll feel a little better about that. Yes, in a 72-hour parking, you're not assuring that, but this is a little bit longer term. So if there's something more that the city can do to get the neighborhoods feeling a little better about, that we're doing the correct background checks, that we have a plan for eviction for violations, and all these kinds of things, I think they'd feel a lot better about it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hauser.
Thank you, Chair. I want to like maybe take a step back and recognize that I think we and city staff as, like, I think that everyone is probably in a hard position, and I don't know much about this lawsuit, but I'm guessing that staff has probably just found out about these items as well. But I think we're kind of between a rock and a hard place in a couple of ways. One is everyone recognizes that we're in a housing crisis and we need to help people, but we also don't really have a lot of the information that we're asking questions about. The other really big component of this is a lawsuit, where what I'm hearing is we need to show that we're making a good faith effort, and we really don't have options other than approve, which is also hard because like it's very clear that everybody on this commission has really good questions and that the community has really good questions, and that, you know, we really want to be thorough on something as important as this. So I wonder, as a solution, as we're like deliberating, if there's a way to do kind of what we've done on, for example, cannabis manufacturing, where if we're going to recommend or if we're going to approve... or if we're going to approve this, that it comes back to us for a review, but instead of waiting a year, maybe it comes back for review in 60 days to show this good faith effort, but also to actually get some of the data on how this is working out. And if we need to make amendments as a planning commission, I'm more comfortable doing it here, where the public has an opportunity to provide the information and another chance for public comment, where we are able to get better answers for our questions and not kind of maybe do it in a vacuum where the community is not involved. So, I don't know if that's a legal potential, or like if we're able to do that, but that's my feeling on what could potentially provide success for both the city as a reviewing body and the subject of this lawsuit. I don't know how people feel about that.
I'm interested to see if that's in our purview.
And so, the proposal, if I understand correctly, is that in 60 days from today?
From when the program starts to get 60 days of data. And I'm throwing 60 out, but like, you know, we should talk about it as a commission.
It'd be four, four commission, the fourth commission meeting instead of 60 days.
And the purpose of that review would be to amend the CDP? Would it be to reopen it and then potentially revoke the CDP?
I don't know about necessarily revoking it, but I think we need to understand if we are creating black water spills, if we are creating safety issues for people who are driving to their homes and are afraid of walking with their children, of people biking down and trying to understand the flow of traffic, of people who are claiming that they have visibility issues, of vehicles that are 35 feet trying to fit into a 30-foot spot. I mean, they're all really good questions, and I think as a city, we've done this really wonderful analysis with the tools and the time we've had. I mean, I think we're all kind of hamstrung here. So I'm trying to figure out if there's a process that achieves something for everybody.
So, I, based on the fact that there is a settlement agreement at play and not wanting to introduce an element of uncertainty with respect to the land use approval, what I think could be acceptable is a review process in terms of a reporting back, so an informational item to, for the commission to get this data. But as far as being able to reopen the permit is not something that I think would be germane to the settlement agreement.
What would we then be able to do with the data? Would we be able to provide additional recommendations of study, like, hey, let's increase them to 40 feet, or maybe they need to be moved 100 feet down the road? I mean, there has, if we get the data back and the data says, hey, it's safe, then, then, you know, that's wonderful. If we get the data back and there's something to be desired, I think that it's our obligation as a group that's here to look at the safety. I mean, really, and that's what the criteria should be limited to.
So is there a legal way to call something as far as a demonstration? And at the end of the demonstration period, allow us to make some of these adjustments based on 60 days worth of data, whatever? Is there a word that we can use that then legally gets us out of your bind of having to do something, but allows us to change things in the permit later?
I would need some more time to analyze whether that would be consistent with the settlement agreement. And Steph has not analyzed that tonight.
Yeah, and I, it's like, it's a, I feel for you too, because it's like, if we can't continue it, but we don't know the, you know, it's, I just don't know what to do at this-
It's a hot potato.
Yeah.
Well, I think what's unique in this instance, if I may, is that the city is the permit applicant, and the city has a desire and an obligation to ensure that its actions are safe and do not endanger the public. That's the fundamental purpose of the city, to protect public health, safety, and welfare. So I don't think this is a situation where you have an applicant who's, you know, in a business or an operation for personal profit, and maybe those profit motivations come above public health and safety. And so I think you have a circumstance where if there are operational safety considerations or concerns, that the city would be in a position itself to seek to remedy them within its flexibility and discretion as the manager of the program, and then should there need to be an amendment to the permit to achieve that, to do it itself. So I think we are in a unique position where annual review is maybe less compelling, from my perspective anyways, as compared to a private party applicant in that regard.
But a private party applicant would be required to do inspections along the way to see if they're living up to the conditions of the permit. And if you're not, you have to make those changes. So if we, if we consider safety and some of these things we talked about as a condition of the permit, and in 60 days, we're finding that's not happening, or whatever that day is-
Right.
Then we would have to change that. So you think there is a legal way to do that as part of a permit process?
Well, I will say that I am aware of annual review processes for use-related permits. The coastal development permit is not clearly a use permit type of permit. It's a development permit for physical development and coastal resource protection in the coastal zone. So, I think we would need to consider whether it's appropriate, and in the commission's purview, for an annual review of what's in fact development, not a use authorization. I think it's a different construct, in my mind anyways. I think it is reasonable to wonder, you know, what the impact will be. This is a novel program, a novel use that the city's seeking to permit, but it is in the city's best interest to ensure it's safely operated, and it does not expose the city, you know, to legal claims, for instance, and liability from reckless program management. And so, you know, the city's, city engineer's obligation in the right of way is to make sure it's safely occupied and safely operated. And given that the city engineer is also the permit applicant, I have no doubt that he will accomplish that within his authorities, you know, outside of this permit.
Okay, we'll put a pin in that, because I think we will circle back on that discussion. But while we ruminate, Commissioner Leal.
Thank you. I think it might have been Acting Director Murdock who made this comment earlier around setbacks, and I wanted to kind of revisit that with these, with these parking spaces. In terms of hearing the feedback from our fellow RV drivers up here on Planning Commission, they do, parking these in tandem, especially in this location, well, for this location, they're in tandem back-to-back. And I think we need to think about that and how that, how they can safely navigate these spaces without causing damage to the other vehicle, especially because we don't have any limitations in front or behind these parking places. So tying back in my comment around appropriate road markings and roadway improvements for Bradford, I think, when you think about setbacks in front and behind of these, this locational parking, I don't know what the numbers should be. I'm going to throw out a suggestion and get reactions and to what folks think, as well as Public Works, but with minimum impact on the analysis, it's already been done for sightlines. So, kind of the numbers that are in my head right now is a minimum of like 10 feet setbacks in the front and behind the spaces, so this is the bookends. And then in between the RVs, there needs probably be some sort of setback between the RVs, so that they're not butt up against each other. I don't know if it's five feet, I don't know if it's 10 feet. I don't know what has been studied in that area in terms of the, if we were to expand this distance, what it should be, but I think we need to think about this, just the setup for these vehicles, given they are large, they're difficult to navigate. Everything I can find online says you either need a pull-through or you need the distance in front of it to back into the space. And if we're limiting these large vehicles to the 10 feet of the roadway, and the roadway is currently 20 feet, we need to make sure that they can get us close to the curb with that overhanging as possible to ensure safe travel on that roadway. So, I throw out that comment there because I think we need to discuss it, and I don't know if it would be a condition of approval or what we would do around the setbacks, but I would, as we discuss more tonight, we should think about these setbacks. I know there's been discussion around increasing the limits of 30 feet. I wouldn't be in favor of increasing the current size of the parking places, just want to throw that out there. I think that's what we've kind of put out, that's what's been put out there for the public, and I think increasing the spaces is maybe premature to do so, given that we haven't implemented this program. I'd rather do that based off of kind of what we're hearing from as we implement the program, given that oversized vehicles are less than 30 feet. There are some less than 30 feet. So, those are my comments on kind of what I've heard recently discussed in terms of the size of the parking places, as well as how we should think about setbacks. So, I don't know, maybe Deputy Director Batista, if you have any comments in terms of what the size of the spaces have been studied, in terms of what length of curb has been safe, and we could throw the delta in between the parking of the two RVs, or if there's any guidance from my fellow commissioners in terms of what their thoughts, the RV drivers up here, what should be appropriate, because I'm definitely not an expert in that area.
As I said earlier, I think, you know, the staff looked at what was the average length of OSVs here in the city, and 30 feet seemed to be like the average length. And I am sure that if we went out there and took a look, especially at this space, it's there, you know, there could be some clearance on the backside and the front side, but as I said, it, we, you know, we would have to, it's all about fitting this puzzle together and making sure that we couple the OSVs up with the right lengths, because there are going to be short ones, there are going to be long ones. So, we're just trying to be flexible.
Okay, I guess just to clarify my question, of the 60 feet that we currently have before us tonight, is this the only 60 feet on Bradford Way that's safe from a sightline perspective? Or if we extended that to 65 feet, let's say, with a five-foot setback, or I don't know if it would be a two-and-a-half-foot setback for each one to get the five feet between the two RVs? If we expand that to 65 feet, so that the front-end tip of the RV in front is 65 feet away from the rear end of the RV in the rear, does that negatively impact sightlines around that turn going south on Bradford Way, or even going north on the opposite direction of travel? Or I guess has a, yeah, that's my question.
So from what I recall, that, you know, you added an extra five feet, the sightline wouldn't be, would not be affected. But, you know, it's, once again, we just have to go out there and field, verify everything, you know, and that's just our due diligence of making sure that these spaces are safe for, for the OSV residents.
Okay, thank you. And Bradford Way, we have a, it's a big, it's a long road, right? So, I imagine there's could be potential couple of feet to play with if there were adjustments necessary at the guidance of Public Works to ensure public safety. So, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner, oh, sorry. Commissioner Godwin's been waiting for a while, but then I'll come to you next, is that okay?
No worries.
Okay, Commissioner Godwin.
Okay. Whenever I worked on military systems, we put something out, an aircraft carrier or something, we always did what we called low-rate production. We always took a few, put them out there and see whether they did well in saltwater, if you threw a 20-foot wave over them, if they functioned well. My suggestion is, instead of approving all 13 spots, or 12, or whatever we've got to do over the next meeting or two, why don't we approve four or six, put them in double-sized spaces, so there's plenty of room, and see what happens? And then get a report back from the Resource Center in 60 days, or whatever people are comfortable with, and say, okay, we approved a few of these, they're working great, my concerns are excessive, and we can shrink everything down to these small spaces and be a big success. But if we try to do everything in one shot, what I've tended to have happen in my career is, we ended up stubbing our toes and saying, oh, we forgot something, and it really wasn't a great idea to go from having none of this device out in the world to having a full rate of production and spending a bunch of money and deciding we built almost the right thing. So, I suggest we approve four, six, or some fraction of the number we're trying to do, and I think it'll save us a lot of pain.
Commissioner Domaret.
Yeah, I believe there's only five on the docket for today anyway, so-
Okay. Well, what-
The next time-
Two or something, whatever.
But I guess maybe under the management, for us to be able to go forward and meet the legal timeframe, you know, maybe we can work out some resolutions to allow them to go forward. So here's, one solution would be, take a 60-foot to two 30-foot, allow a 15-foot camper in one, and then a 55-foot or 45-foot in the other. I mean, manage it so that we keep the 60 feet for two spaces, but maybe you can fit a smaller one and a larger one. That gives you the option to have a bigger vehicle than the 40 or 45 feet, whatever, something like that. So, at least for these first five spaces, you know, we want to go forward so that we're meeting the timetable, you know, legally. And then the next size, I agree, we ought to be looking at like the flexibility of what those spaces should be. But it sounds like 80% of the RVs that come in are 30 feet or less, I guess, something like that. So, but that gives you the flexibility that if there is a 45-footer or 50-footer, you can, you can accommodate that.
Commissioner Ferguson.
I almost lost my train of thought. I guess, for reference, if you want to go to a national park in the state of California, you have to be 27 feet or less. So, it's not that unreasonable to have a 30-foot space. That's, that's an unknown thing that anyone buying an RV would know if they had it for that purpose, right? I guess, I had two questions regarding the settlement, which I don't know if we can speak to or not. One would be, if this becomes something that's appealed to the Coastal Commission, which would apply to all three of these items on the agenda tonight, would that still constitute due diligence by the city in doing the best it could, but it couldn't foresee an appeal to the Coastal Commission?
So, let me clarify. So, I commented on the item tonight, or this particular item being appealable to the Coastal Commission. The same is true for the item related to San Pedro Avenue site. The Francisco Boulevard site is not appealable to the Coastal Commission. All three of the items tonight are appealable to the city council, so I want to clarify that point. As to compliance with the settlement, Ms. Sharma can elaborate on that point, but, you know, the city's obligation at this point in time is to obtain the permits by May 29th, and beyond that, there are appeal processes that are recognized as part of the permitting process.
Sure, and there is a provision where if the city receives an adverse decision from the Coastal Commission, precluding the city's ability to comply with the settlement agreement, the litigation is restored to where the parties are, and so the settlement agreement would be off at that point.
Got it. So, I guess, to be clear, is there anything other than an approval of a full three-year program here in the development of these sites that doesn't violate the settlement agreement?
Not that I can think of at this moment.
We have time for a special, I mean, I, sorry, I'm like- I was thinking the same thing. Is there an opportunity to have a special meeting with, even if it's just the Planning Commission, even if it's before, it would be before our next Planning Commission meeting, giving staff an opportunity to kind of gather the answers to a lot of our questions, and then we can make our determination then?
Well, I think it would depend on the nature of the questions. I think it's staff's assessment we've evaluated, and there is sufficient evidence to make the findings for approval of this permit this evening, and we would encourage you to do that. A lot of the questions have related to operational components of this program that are really beyond the purview of the Planning Commission as it relates to the findings for this particular permit. I'm not saying they're unreasonable concerns, but there are reasons, there are concerns that relate to operation of the program, and they're really within the auspices of the city council, in my opinion. So, if they were related to the findings required for approval of a CDP, absolutely we could consider what those questions are, estimate how long it would take to gather that information, and then consider potentially continuing to a special meeting. The ability to notice a special meeting that's not continued from this evening is limited and likely could not occur by the compliance deadline of May 29th. And so, we'd be threading a fine needle trying to set up such a special meeting, but we could if the circumstances were justified, and so we can help you with that process.
Commissioner Hauser. Commissioner Hauser?
So, just from a process standpoint, if we continue tonight, then we wouldn't have to renotice, is my understanding, if we continue to a date certain tonight, to a special meeting.
That's correct. That would make, require us to ensure we have a quorum of the commission that's available, and they could confirm that, you know, this evening at the dais and so forth, and that we could also, you know, reasonably obtain the information and analysis that the commission sought in relation to the findings.
Well, my thought, and I'm sorry I keep harping on this, but maybe it's, there's not enough time to do like new traffic studies, like new line-of-sight studies, but there would be time at least to understand if we could have a 60-day review. Am I missing something? I feel like-
Potentially, if that was germane to the findings for approval, I think, again, many of your concerns, I don't want to put words in your mouth, many of the commission's concerns-
Yeah.
Sounded related to operational components of the program, and, you know, are there blackwater spills and so forth that occur, that really aren't directly related to the findings for this coastal development permit? And so, again, the commission, I think, would need to focus on those issues relevant to the permit action that's within its jurisdiction, and not program-operation aspects that are within the jurisdiction of the City Council.
Yeah, and we, I definitely don't want to step on any count, like, we don't want to get into their purview, obviously, but my understanding is that our jurisdiction pertains to the safety of the configuration of the spaces, which is what I would want, I mean, I would want to limit the 60-day review to that, because I feel like that's what, at least the bulk of the questions that we're asking are about. I mean, I think that 80% of tonight has been about safety. I, I mean, I don't know.
Well, if I could just offer some thoughts on hearing the discussion tonight, I think some of the discussion relates to, are the spaces feasible for implementation of the program? The program applicant, the permit applicant has offered his opinion that it is adequate. In fact, those are the dimensions proposed by the applicant, they relate to the observed sizes of RVs. Now, was consideration given to maneuverability and buffer spaces, you know, to points Commissioner Godwin's raised? I don't know. It sounds like perhaps not. And so, you know, if there are technical concerns about maneuverability and so forth, one option is to continue it, to allow us to evaluate that, the other is to give some flexibility in the dimensions of the spaces, and allow the city engineer some discretion to provide a buffer on the front and the back, like as Commissioner Liel articulated, so that the maneuverability can be more, you know, could be safely achieved, for instance. So, there are ways to achieve much of what I've heard the commission discuss, through conditions of approval and staff discretion, which is often the case with other types of permits, where an intent is stated, some boundaries are provided, and staff is allowed to do its expert staff work. If there are other issues that we can't provide you options on tonight, that could be a basis for a continuance, in my opinion.
I guess, I see Commissioner Liel does have his light on, but really quickly, because it relates to that. So, to stick in our purview, and with the findings that we have to determine tonight, effectively, we have to determine that these locations are safe, but we have to decouple that from making any comment on the program itself. Is that correct?
We are asking you to make consideration of program components that relate to the physical aspects of the coastal development permit. So, space configuration, ability to ensure coastal access, to avoid impacts to coastal visitor parking that are unreasonable, and so forth. Those types of findings articulated in the staff report, we think, in my opinion anyways, it's unlikely that any aspect of this, these spaces is likely to adversely impact the policies in the coastal, the local coastal program, which are germane to the commission's action. Everything else is a programmatic, operational component that's within the purview of the City Council, and its relationship with the Pacifica Resource Center. The commission's discretion, in my opinion, is very narrow on this issue, and you either support the findings that have been presented, or you articulate that you don't support them, and you either condition to make it a supportable finding, or you say, "We don't think there's evidence, and we deny the permit." So, I think the commission's discretion to look at many issues beyond the physicality of the space, I think, is relatively limited.
So, an example is, if we have any safety concerns with the sanitation program, the sanitation aspect with the program, that is outside of our purview, because it doesn't have to do with the implementation of the parking spots.
If you could articulate a local coastal program policy that would be implicated by the sewage, or the pumping program, then it would be within the commission's purview. I think many of those concerns could likely be addressed with conditions of approval, potentially, and we could help you with that. It's not clear to me what further analysis would be needed to support, you know, an action this evening, for instance, as it relates to that issue as an example.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Liel, sorry, thank you.
Thank you. This may all be related as well, but I think a couple of comments I made are probably related to conditions of approval, and I was kind of typing some up as to what I think they would be to review with staff. But as I was looking through the conditions of approval, again, I noticed there's reference to the temporary safe parking program, as well as the code of conduct. I may have missed it, but I don't see either of those in our agenda packet this evening, and based off of questions we've had, I have questions around who is creating those terms, conditions, and other requirements of the program, as well as the code of conduct? Who is authoring those, and, as well as approving them? Because it seems like if we don't include some conditions of approval that we've either heard tonight, or we are assuming are part of the program, we may want to, as has been described, we may want to add those as our conditions, if that's going to, if those are things that we feel are necessary for the safe approval of this project. So, I guess going back to my initial question is, the development, just curious, who's responsible for creating those terms, conditions, and other requirements of the temporary safe parking program, as well as the code of conduct?
The settlement agreement, and the agreement of, the operations agreement that was entered into by the City of Pacifica already, those are the, those, the negotiation between the parties at the agreement.
Okay, so, going back to garbage, because that sounded like that was still open and being discussed, that is not a requirement of, or a condition, complying with the garbage requirement is not a condition of the temporary safe parking program or code of conduct?
So, Executive Director Reese can comment on the particular document that that requirement is contained in, but compliance with the sewage receptic, again, I apologize, I don't know the technical term for an RV, but the pumping requirement, and appropriate disposal of trash through the city's program or other authorized receptacles. To my knowledge, our program code of conduct requirements, for instance, that the program participants would need to comply with, if they did not go for their, you know, twice-weekly minimum pumping, for example, that could be a disqualifying characteristic or behavior that would allow someone to have their permit terminated, for instance. So, there is a safeguard to ensure that those minimum standards and activities and behaviors are met, and that the Resource Center would also work cooperatively to try to facilitate any special needs that folks have, you know, for increased pumping, or trash service, or the like. But again, Ms. Reese can expand upon that.
Yeah, so, my understanding is part of the settlement, the City of Pacifica is required to have mobile dumping for gray and blackwater, and garbage, and recycling pickups. So, the City of Pacifica, you know, is working on making that, so that is required as part of the program, and yes, we will be working with clients or the-
Ms. Reese, sorry, sorry to interrupt you. We're having audio difficulty, and we can't quite hear you.
Thank you.
And Chair Berman, this is an issue that has occurred in City Council meetings as well, after, you know, several hours of the meeting occurring. We have not yet been able to identify a technical solution. It does resolve itself after some period, but we don't have a technical intervention at this point in time to restore that communication.
Can she call in on the cell phone, and we can hold the cell phone up to a microphone?
Can you hear me now?
Perhaps, if we, so it sounds like maybe if we give the system a minute, it might resolve itself?
So, in my experience, I think we've had two City Council meetings where this has occurred.
Yeah.
It took more than a minute to resolve itself, unfortunately.
Okay.
State of their facility, how could it?
Okay, well, I guess perhaps maybe we could take a couple minutes to come back to Ms. Reese. Does anyone object to that on the commission?
Chair Berman, in the absence of Director Reese being able to participate, I did just want to highlight that the code of conduct that the city entered into a draft copy was attached, and is included with the resolutions that allowed them to enter into those documents. So, it is available for the public to review on our, on our website. And it looks like Director Reese has disconnected, and I'm hopeful that she'll return to us.
Oh, I was just going to say, the reason for my question is, is I'm thinking if, kind of one thing that I want to ensure happens, and is that related to earlier question, is the use outside of the designated spaces, outside of these vehicles, and expanding that with the participant members of the program. If that's in a code of conduct, or if that's in a document that could change over time, then that changes my approval here, right? So, is that a condition of approval that I, that we shall add to here, if that, if my fellow commissioners agree? Or is that in our purview, I guess, to add that condition of approval is the first question? And then second, yeah, I guess, is it necessary to add, or is it covered elsewhere within the program? So, that's the context for my question.
It appears that Director Reese has returned. Try this again.
Can you hear me now? Is it better?
No, it's, it's still fuzzy.
It's better. I tried on a different phone line.
I believe it's on our end and not yours, Director Reese.
I'll check. I can send a message to Deputy Director, to Mr. Redock. I think you try that.
We're still having trouble hearing you.
So, Commissioner Liel, I will just directly address your point. The PRC has the discretion to amend the code of conduct, and the documents related to this program indicate, so long as the amendments are in accordance with Section 3G2 and Section 3G3 of this agreement, and PRC notifies the city of any significant changes to the code of conduct. So, I think things like no longer being required to participate in the dumping program or the trash pickup program, the city would likely to interpret those as significant changes to the code of conduct. Now, you know, some of the other, you know, more minor elements that might be in the code of conduct, you know, that, as we mentioned earlier, flexibility to adapt the program to advance and to help with its implementation, I think, is the reason for having some flexibility in the terms of the code of conduct, while the spirit and intent is to remain with what we're talking about tonight.
Commissioner Domarat?
As far as the timetable goes, when do we, or when do you envision, or do you envision the other eight spaces coming in front of the Planning Commission? Our next meeting is what, the 30th, which is after any kind of legal requirement, so we're going to see those later on.
So, only the spaces in the coastal zone require a discretionary permit. The city is implementing the program spaces outside of the coastal zone without a discretionary permit. So, the commission will not see those spaces.
Commissioner Wright? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Domarat, were you done?
I think so. I was just trying to say, is there any way that we can, through the back door, just consider these five amongst us as a demonstration, and then lessons learned over the next couple of weeks, but we're not going to see the next one? So, but I'm hoping that staff would be able to implement some of the things that they heard us discuss today into those remaining eight, and maybe make some changes before those, those eight, you know, get approved by anyone. So, certainly in the size and dimensions of the parking, parking spaces, so forth. Oh, sorry.
So, the city engineer, you know, is responsible for administering those other spaces, and so, you know, I would imagine he would want consistency among the program spaces, for management and safety and so forth, as well as what we recognize as, so to speak, the interoperability of the spaces, so that as program participants are relocating from, you know, one space location to another, as their 29 days come to an end, that they do have a reasonable chance of parking their vehicle in another space, right? That it's not so different in its dimensions and operation to disqualify them from parking there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wright?
Is it possible, if the city is going ahead and doing that with the other, not the five that we're considering here tonight, is it possible to still be in compliance with the agreement that you have made, and add five additional spaces in those places that don't require our approval?
I don't believe that would be consistent with the program that's approved by the City Council, as well as the agreed-upon locations for the spaces.
Where those negotiated.
That's correct. The spaces have already, and the locations have already been set forth via agreement, and have been approved by the City Council.
So, how did they do that without our approval? I'm confused. Isn't that putting the cart before the horse?
I mean, I suppose one could see it that way, but, you know, similarly, someone that buys a piece of property and wants to construct a building on it, doesn't need the commission's permission to buy the property and to desire to have a building, they do need to come through for the permits, and if they don't get them, they cannot build their building, or in this case, operate the spaces. Not only are these permits subject to appeal, they are subject to City Council call-up as well. So, an adverse decision, for instance, a City Council member could call it up to ensure that the spaces are considered and hopefully approved to execute the settlement agreement. So, it could cut both ways. No action through the form of a continuance could delay this process. I don't think that would be consistent with the city's intent and desire to try to fulfill and effectuate the settlement agreement. So, I think staff would urge you, again, to try to make a decision, whatever that decision is tonight, so that we can demonstrate that we're making progress towards the permits in accordance with the settlement agreement.
And I was just wanting to add that, because this came about through a lawsuit from the City of Pacifica, it's a little bit of a unique circumstance, vis-à-vis other developments that have come before the commission.
Commissioner House, oh, I'm sorry, were you done, Commissioner Wright? Commissioner Hauser?
So, I feel like we've been maybe a little slow to the draw. So, I think what I'm hearing is there's a lawsuit, or we have to make a decision tonight. The City Council's actually already done all this work, but because this is going to the Coastal Commission, there's a process through the municipal code that required it to come to us, so it's almost pro forma. I don't want, I mean, I don't want to say, like, maybe I shouldn't be saying that exactly, but, but the City Council is already, we are appointed by the City Council, they've already used their expert discretion to allocate these 13 spaces. The eight of them don't require our review, because there's not a municipal code-determined process. We're only here because the municipal code says, if it's going to the Coastal Commission, it must go to Planning Commission.
I think most of that's correct. This doesn't need to go to the Coastal Commission. The city has local permit jurisdiction over this space, and the other two spaces to be considered tonight. This space and the San Pedro Avenue space is subject to appeal to the Coastal Commission, and could end up there if an appeal's filed.
Right, because it's in the coastal zone, right.
So, to clarify, it is a coastal development permit process. Many people assume that means the Coastal Commission has to act on it. That's not the case here, unless it's appealed. You can use your judgment as to the decision-making process tonight. There is no obligation for the commission to approve these permits, there's no obligation for the commission to act tonight. It's in the city's best interest, under the terms of the settlement agreement, to take an action tonight-
Okay.
-and to approve the spaces. There are risks to the city to fail to act, or to deny the permits, but those risks and issues are not within the Planning Commission's purview. You've asked about them, and we've informed you as to the background related to this issue. We think there's evidence to support approvals. Many reasonable modifications to the spaces have been discussed tonight, which can be effectuated through conditions of approval, but ultimately, it's up to the majority of the commission to decide the appropriate action tonight.
Okay. So, from my- So from, from my own personal perspective, I would want, if I'm doing an internal cost-benefit analysis, what I'm hearing is it's beneficial to make the approval, and I would probably concur with that. I would say the things that I've heard tonight that are personally important to me are this flexibility concept and making the 60, you know, the 60 feet appropriate for two spaces of whatever sizes they are, they don't need to be striped as 30 feet individually. Adding a condition that makes sure that there's no encroachment outside of what I'll just call the 10 by 60 zone, so nothing encroaching over the walk or into the right-of-way further. And I had one more, but it's so late that I don't quite remember what it was, but that's my, I'll leave it there.
One clarification question, Acting Director Murdock, did you say if the Planning Commission were to deny any of these three public hearing items, is the City Council, they are able to do a call-up and they can just supersede our answer, our determination?
Correct. So think of it like a City Council appeal. Legally speaking, it's not an appeal, they don't need a reason, they don't need to state a basis, and we encourage them not to, so that they're simply hearing the item in your place. And so, yes, that's a mechanism in the municipal code, and it could occur regardless of what the Planning Commission's action is to approve or to deny the permit.
Okay. Before I pass it to Commissioner Liel, I wanted to say I agree with a lot that has been said. I particularly agree with what Commissioner Liel has put forth, and in my personal opinion, I think in this location, additional striping and signage is necessary, just for clarity for the participants in the program and fellow drivers, bikers, walkers nearby. I would ima, what I visualize is there's parking that is 60 feet long, let's say, for up to two vehicles, doesn't necessarily have to be two vehicles, and then there's roughly 10, maybe 15, based on the determination of Public Works, no park striped areas in front and back, allowing space for if there's two vehicles there, the front vehicle could pull forward, and the back vehicle can significantly pull back. I think it might even have to be more than 10 feet, but I don't drive recreational vehicles. That's kind of what I'm visualizing. I'm also visualizing a taper, like a striping taper from the shoulder, because this road does expand and contract in width, so a taper, so a vehicle that's driving doesn't all of a sudden see a big RV. There's a, like a taper stripe from the shoulder, kind of easing into the park area or the no-park area. Commissioner Liel.
Thank you. Yeah, and I was gonna start talking about conditions as well, so I have the same, similar sentiments as Commissioner Hauser does, or Vice Chair Hauser does, in terms of kind of the position we are in tonight and our options. And just to go back to kind of a comment I opened with around roadway improvements. So on the east side of Bradford Way, traveling north, there is a delineation for the right-hand turn to go east on Sharp Park Road. It's really the length of, from the Highway 1 exit all the way to the terminus of Bradford Way, going north at Sharp Park Road. I imagine a very similar one going south, as I'm thinking through this, this, this condition. Now, I would leave that at Public Works discretion. I'm not a roadway engineer, or I don't have any qualifications to make that determination, but what I'm envisioning is, given that when Francisco Boulevard terminates at Sharp Park Road, I'm in the right-hand lane to continue going south, I need to taper into the left-hand lane to allow for the parking lane, which, in my non-expert opinion on parking lanes, begins north of the driveway for Sharp Park Golf Course. So I would expect the motorists to be kind of guided into the left 10-foot of Bradford Way. Additionally, having setbacks with the parking spaces, I fully support that, and I would think we would need to have red curb where there's no parking allowed. So I would expect, at least on the west side of Bradford Way, roadway striping improvements, including no parking signs, no parking curb paint, as well as kind of striping in the road from Sharp Park Road to the north, all the way to Fairway Drive to the south, which would cross the, the two pedestrian intersections, one for the golf course to go under the tunnel, as well as the, the pedestrian crosswalk or intersection at Fairway Drive and Bradford Way, as motorists go towards Maury Point and the West Fairway neighborhood. So that's one condition in terms of being able to have those, those roadway improvements between Sharp Park Road and Fairway Drive. Additionally, I think, given where these parking places are located, we may, Public Works may want to look at a left-hand guide lane from the Highway 1 exit, so that someone doesn't overshoot that left-hand turn, driving south on Bradford Way into kind of those parking places, so that they're in the lane of traffic. Probably not enough room to add a bike lane, but we'll leave that there. I'm, I'm going back and forth in terms of a continuous 60, 60-foot spot versus two delineated spots, frankly, for a couple reasons. One is, we expect the RVs to be parked inches away from each other. These are large vehicles. I, I don't know how feasible that is, especially if we're, if it's a puzzle that folks are putting together, but I also agree with the flexibility, given that these sizes aren't, they're standardized, but they're not, we can't pick which ones are gonna be coming in, right? It's gonna be who's, who's applying for the program. So I go back and forth on that, and it, so having, having the space in between the vehicles, but also allowing the flexibility to support the needs of the community that comes to the Pacifica Resource Center for support and participation in this program. But I fully support the setbacks in front of and behind of the space we, we have, and I think those setbacks could be, given that there would be no parking setbacks, or at least I would expect them to be, they could be as long as, as, could be appropriate for these size of vehicles. So I don't know how many conditions of approval that would be. I'm thinking one related to the, just the overall roadway improvements for Bradford Way, and then another related to the setbacks, or if that would be a condition of approval, that would be included in the, in the, in the item, in the permit as well, but those are kind of the two large items that I'm thinking of, at least a top mind for me, or what I've heard tonight.
Commissioner Godwin.
Got one, one last comment. When you back up one of these vehicles, frequently you can't use your inside mirror, you've got to use your side mirrors, and if you've got a trailer, it's really easy to jackknife the trailer and not notice it until it's substantially at an angle to the back of your RV. So you may even want to limit, or just not allow trailers, or you may want to provide extra space for the RV you're expecting to back up, because it's, it can be challenging backing them up blind.
Commissioner Wright.
Perhaps I'm, I'm missing something, but would there be a benefit to across the street from these RVs having no parking in order to maximize the amount of usable width to make public safety easier? That would be, I guess, a question for our Public Works.
Commissioner Liel? Or, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna, I believe there is no parking, but I, maybe, I believe there is no parking on the other side of that roadway, but.
That is correct, there is no parking on the other side.
Then my other question would be, is, will the Resource Center phone number be available for public complaints on those signs, or will everything route through the police department, all the complaints?
The only signs that are erected, or set to be erected at this point, are the signs that say, "Your vehicle be towed."
Okay.
Commissioner Liel, did you have another?
No.
No. So it seems like we are kind of starting to form some conditions of approval. Oh, was that a call-in? Oh, I'm sorry. Are there, is there a motion, or maybe, I don't know if staff has some draft conditions that provide the flexi, flexibility that this item probably needs, but also can give the commission confidence in things in our purview?
I'm willing to stand behind what sounded like a motion from Commissioner Liel.
I guess, staff, was that, were those articulate conditions of approval, or are there suggestions as to how, because I guess I first looked to my fellow commissioners to see if there's additional conditions that have been discussed tonight that I've missed or intense, based off our purview. If not, then, then I look to staff to see if there's, if those are coherent conditions or if there's suggested language.
I think they, they are many of the elements we would hope for in a condition of approval, but we would need to restate them in condition form to understand who's obligated, when they're required to be implemented, what discretion there may be, et cetera, so we can attempt to read it back when Chair Berman indicates is an appropriate time in relation to a potential motion.
One item, because I was trying to take notes of potential conditions, earlier Commissioner Ferguson had mentioned the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, and confirming that participants are able to register if needed. Is that something that would be a condition of approval that we can make? Is that in our purview, I guess? Or does it relate too much to the program?
Well, I think one perspective is restating an existing legal requirement, and so I'm not sure that you'd be running afoul of any jurisdiction in that sense, and restating it for clarity may, may be helpful. It's not a well-known requirement, and thank you, Commissioner Ferguson, for bringing it up. I think it's not likely to apply to many of the generators, but I don't see any harm or foul in including that requirement for program participants.
Do you have, I'll let it go, yeah. Are technology requirements within the program that apply to all generators?
Okay, so it seems like it's inevitably going, it needs to be complied with inevitably, so I guess, if applicable, it's a legal requirement, correct?
Right, so the Bay Area Air Quality Management District has legal authority to impose certain regulations and requirements related to air quality, which are within its jurisdiction, and so that is one of them, and we could restate, at least in general terms, that all requirements of Bay Area Air Quality Management District regulations pertaining to generators shall be followed, you know, to protect air quality, something along those lines, and it would encompass, you know, the variety of regulations, including any other technical standards that Commissioner Ferguson states are applicable to generators.
Okay. Well, whoever ends up making the motion, if you wish to include that, that's up on the table.
I'd be ready to make a motion, I guess. Staff, do you have re-languageing that we should read before I make the motion?
Well, I think the thing I'm struggling with most is trying to concisely capture the Bradford Way improvements, and I haven't heard any specific feedback from the city engineer, his capacity as the city engineer, as to whether those, you know, sound generally acceptable, and if we would give him the flexibility, you know, should strive to incorporate all of these to the maximum extent practicable, or some sort of flexibility, because there may be other considerations when getting down to the design level on that, that type I don't know if the commission wants to ask a question of the city engineer in that regard.
Yeah, I guess, based on what I described and my vision of the future of Bradford Way with stripes, does that, I guess, is that reasonable? I'm, I'm happy to defer to kind of the Public Works expertise there, but are the things that I described in that, whether it's parking signs, parking curbs, painting, or lane striping, that seem unfeasible there?
Right, so, once again, we will design to the standards and make sure that the spaces and the roadway striping is to current, current standards like MUTCD, and, and it is possible. And so we'll, we'll, we'll completely do a field check and make the necessary improvements.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense, like, wording around roadway standards for Bradford, Bradford Way upgraded to current roadway standards between Sharp Park Road and Fairway Drive. And I guess, there was discussion, currently what we have before us are, I believe, two 30-foot parking spaces, or is it just 60 by 10? I just want to clarify that, do we need to adjust the, what's before us to accommodate the flexibility, because I'm happy to adjust it for that? I just want to make sure what, what we put out there isn't restrictive to get that intent.
It's up to the city to enforce it anyways, right? It's their program.
They also have the flexibility to make bigger parking spaces elsewhere, that they don't need our approval for, so I think they could well have already thought this through well enough and were.
We would like to probably see it as one, one continuous 60, just to provide that flexibility.
Yeah, and what I see is a lot of language in there around 60 by 10, so I guess we're covered there, we won't have to make any adjustments.
So Chair Berman, I do have a few, four actually, potential conditions of approval. We're taking a moment to review the drafting, and then, when desired, I can read those into the record. And I don't know why that computer keeps making noises. I think it's a low battery alert, I had to disconnect it earlier.
The technology is getting tired in this room.
It's a hint.
Yeah. I guess while we wait for staff, how do members of the commission feel about just a five-minute bathroom break after this item? I think some of us might be leaving, but for those that are in it for the long haul tonight, I think we'll do a five-minute recess. Does that sound okay? All right.
Some of us have taken ours.
Sure. I'm getting close.
Or pizza to council chambers?
Looking for a plug?
Just one person?
Plug adapter, which I thought I had in my bag, but I can't find.
I've got one in the car, got an Apple.
Could be anyone, real USB to regular outlet.
All right. Is staff ready to recite the four conditions?
Yes, Chair Berman, and happy to take feedback on these. This is our attempt to capture the extensive discussion on these points. So the first condition would read that the applicant may combine the two 10-foot by 30-foot program parking spaces into a contiguous space for not more and not 30-foot program parking spaces into a contiguous space for not more and not less than two OSVs to be parked in order to enable flexible program management for OSVs of different sizes.
I'm sorry, was it not more and not less?
Yes, it's awkward language. We're wanting to make sure it's clear for purposes of the settlement agreement that this is intended for two vehicles and not one large vehicle, for instance.
Could it be no more than?
Yeah.
Well, okay.
You can't have three 20s or something like that.
Yeah.
Right, so you're telling two vehicles, and then the flexibility being the size of those two vehicles that would accommodate the 60.
Right, not more and not less than two.
Okay, got it.
Maybe there's a better way to write it, but we think it's important to get to the intent and the requirement of the settlement agreement.
Sounds good.
To make that clear. The second condition is the program space shall have a no parking buffer zone at the front and rear of the program spaces, parentheses 10-foot by 60 feet, to make clear it's the front and back of the overall space, not less than five feet in depth, and the full width of the program space, 10 feet, with the exact depth at the discretion of the city engineer.
Sounds good to me.
What about in between the two?
Third, all program participants shall comply with all Bay Area Air Quality Management District regulations applicable to generators proposed for operation at the program spaces.
That sounds good to me.
And lastly, prior to program operations, the city engineer shall implement pavement striping and lane tapers in compliance with applicable traffic engineering standards to the maximum extent practicable.
That sounds good to me, seeing head nods.
And I realize, having said that, that I think I did leave out parking restrictions such as red curb and signage. So to the extent those are needed to implement the pavement striping, it's probably worth putting in the condition, but.
In my personal opinion, at least, the condition about no parking zones or buffer spaces at the front and back to the discretion of Public Works, that satisfies my concern personally.
Comment on this one. So in front of the parking places, in front of this location, Bradford Way does go back down to a single lane towards those intersections, so, and it's also around the curve, towards the curve, so I actually want some signage and/or designation that either the golfers, which they usually don't park there, but, or the, actually, the folks staying in the OSVs, if they have additional cars to, for whatever reason, to go to their place of work and, or what have you, they don't park in those areas as well, they park in appropriate areas, because they're probably not going to be out there with a tape measure, knowing when the size of the street gets below 20 feet and it's not clear on Bradford Way. So that's my concern, especially around that area, I guess, south of the parking areas. So that's, was something I was, I'd like included, if we could.
We're working on a revision now to consider, in just a moment.
Would we be able to do just a five-minute recess? Is that okay with staff? Or are you ready?
It's possible. It is preferable to do that at the end of the public hearing.
I figured, okay. We're getting there.
So if it goes on for a long time, then maybe we could, the commission could reconsider. So here's the revision to try to incorporate some of the curb markings and parking signage, if I understand the intent. So, prior to program operations, the city engineer shall implement pavement striping and lane tapers, and any red curb markings and no parking signage required to implement the pavement striping and lane tapers in compliance with applicable traffic engineering standards to the maximum extent practicable.
Yes, and I guess my only comment there is, is the scope of where those shall be applied. I didn't, I guess, want to make sure it's from Sharp Park Road to Fairway Drive. And I think maybe applicable standards may still leave that discretion, but reviewing the entire scope from Sharp Park Road to Fairway Drive, because that's kind of the main thoroughfare that will be driven there. I don't know if that's.
Is that something that's acceptable to the applicant?
Yes, we will verify with and make sure that we implement red curbing where necessary.
So the striping improvements would be through?
Exactly, and accommodate the striping.
Okay.
Okay. So, prior to program operations, the city engineer shall evaluate Bradford Way between Sharp Park Road and Fairway Drive to implement pavement striping and lane tapers, and any red curb markings and no parking signage required to implement the pavement striping and lane tapers in compliance with applicable traffic engineering standards to the maximum extent practicable.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Commissioner Liel, again?
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right.
Move that the planning commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approves coastal development CDP 43922 by adopting the resolution included as attachment A to the staff report, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, as well as the four condition approvals just read before this motion, to the resolution and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you for your motion, Commissioner Liel. Is there a second? Commissioner Wright?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, please vote. Thank you. May we have a five-minute recess?
It's at your prerogative, Chair Berman.
All right. We, so it's 10:36, how about, let's come back, would four minutes be okay? 10:40? Okay, we'll start at 10:40.
Does anyone have a USB charger?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have a USB converter that I could use? I have a charger, I just don't have like the little end of the. Yeah, like just, okay.
These A to C chargers.
Bringing it back to our meeting, so our next public hearing item is file number 2022-013 Coastal Development Permit CDP 438-22 to establish two temporary safe parking program parking spaces, each 30 feet by 10 feet. The parking spaces would be reserved for use by a program participant living in an operational vehicle, trailer, or motor home with operating restroom facilities for a limited period of time on excess San Pedro Avenue public right-of-way, located approximately 100 feet north of the ACE Hardware Building at 560 San Pedro Avenue, obsessor parcel Recommended sequo action is Class 1 and Class 4 categorical exemptions, SEQUA Guideline Section 15301 and 15304 and common sense exception, SEQUA Guideline Section 15061B3. And recommended action is approved as conditioned. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening again. I am senior planner Bonnie O'Connor. Under this item, the planning commission is being asked to consider the approval of coastal development permit CDP 43822 for the establishment and minor improvements for two temporary safe parking program parking spaces on excess San Pedro Avenue public As background to tonight's item, the city council adopted Resolution 12-2022 in February of this year, which approved the city's participation in a three-year temporary safe parking program that will provide up to 13 spaces for exclusive use by program participants living in an operational recreational vehicle, trailer, or motor home with operating toilet facilities while program participants seek permanent housing solutions. The resolution also authorized the city manager to execute the operations agreement in with the Pacifica Resource Center, which details the terms, provisions, and obligations of the Pacifica Resource Center and the city to implement the program. This action is also followed by the city council's approval of the location of the 13 program parking spaces as part of a settlement agreement in November 2021. This improvement recognized the space is located in the coastal zone, could require approval of a coastal development permit. As detailed in the staff report, staff found that the project, which includes establishment of two program parking spaces along San Pedro Avenue and installation of signage, meets the definition of development per the Pacifica Municipal Code and does require issuance of a coastal development permit. Staff's analysis, as detailed in the staff report, finds that the project is consistent with the city's certified local coastal program. Additionally, staff's analysis finds that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Therefore, staff recommends approving the project as conditioned to support the temporary safe parking program approved by city council. That concludes my presentation. And deputy director of Public Works Sam Batista is present to represent the applicant role of this project. Chief of Police Dan Stidl is present, and Anita Reese from the Pacifica Resource Center is available via phone to help answer questions regarding the operation of the temporary safe parking program. Thanks.
Thank you. And Chair Berman, I'll note that the city did receive a written public comment after publication of the agenda packet on this location, and so we've provided it to the commissioners, as well as made it available on the planning commission website and in the back of the council chambers.
Thank you. Before I open it up to the council, or the commission for questions, first, acting director Murdock, can you remind me, given that we asked a lot of questions in our last hearing item, which probably apply to some questions we have with this particular item, do we have to do anything specific to state those back for the record on this item?
So as I mentioned at the outset of the last public hearing, each of these public hearings this evening are distinct from one another, and so the record of each item is independent of the other. And so if there are key questions or points that the commission wants on the record for this particular public hearing, they will need to make those points, they can make them briefly and say, you know, as further elaborated, you know, making some reference. make them briefly and say, you know, as further elaborated, you know, making some reference to the prior consideration, but we will need to address those points in the record if they're germane to this particular item.
Thank you. All right, I'll open it up to the commission, Commissioner Hauser.
Thank you, Chair. Based on our last hearing, I'd like to clarify that for this hearing, that there are 13 spaces that council has approved, that the two that are the subject of this hearing require a coastal development permit, and that as part of the municipal code procedure, this has to come to Planning Commission, but that these are previously determined spots as proposed by council. I'd also love it if staff could confirm that there's a lawsuit where this decision has to be made by May 29th in order to protect the city's liability interests.
Yes, that's correct, Vice Chair Hauser. The city pursuant to a lawsuit, Gary versus City of Pacifica, has the obligation to approve 13 spaces, and five of them are before the Planning Commission through the coastal development permitting process.
Thank you for that clarification. I'd also just like to state for the record that I had asked staff previously if the location would have any effect on the existing trees, and I was told that they did not have an effect, so I appreciate that response from staff. And that's it for me.
Any other questions? Commissioner Ferguson?
Two notes for this location specifically, given that this is a pro forma vote. With the city's local coastal program, Local Coastal Act Policy Number 5 states that lower-cost visitor recreational facilities and opportunities shall be protected. This is a parking lot that is full every single weekend with recreational uses. My favorite hiking spot in Pacifica is Pedro Point Headlands. The preferable parking spot is at the entrance to Devil's Slide. That's almost always full if you're not there by 9:00 or 10:00 in the morning. The only other decent access point for that is these spots that we're talking about. And just to be clear, what we're creating here is not just two spots. The effect of this, if you have permanent RV parking there, is you're going to attract other similar users, and those people are also going to have other vehicles that they're going to park around there, the owners of these OSVs. So, it's not just two spots you're taking in effect, it's more than that. So, just to be clear, we're going to be in violation of that, in my opinion. Furthermore, Section 30223 of the California Coastal Act talks about upland areas. Upland areas necessary to support coastal recreation usually reserved for such uses. I believe we're in violation of that as well, but that's just my commentary for the record, given the nature of the trial tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. With respect to policy number five that you referenced, there is more than one component in that policy. You articulated your thoughts on the lower-cost visitor and recreational facilities component. There's a separate and equally important component, and housing opportunities for persons of low and moderate income shall be protected, encouraged, and where feasible, provided. And it goes on from there. So, I think there are multiple factors to be balanced, and it's helpful to understand your balancing of those factors, and your fellow commissioners may want to articulate their balancing of those factors as well.
Sure.
Commissioner Godwin.
Concur with the previous comments. I also have parked there to make use of San Pedro mountain hiking. It is a very helter-skelter area. There's no rhyme or reason in how people park there, and that becomes an issue. So, for another day, another time, maybe the city can look at formalizing some other kind of parking spaces to maximize that use. This area, I guess, is a question for Public Works staff. Those are unimproved spaces that you're looking at, so there'll be some level of improvement that would define what that space looks like and where that is. Is that like crushed rock or something that then would have the signage and, you know, so that people know that those spots are definitely designated as the RV parking area? Is that correct?
I'll let Deputy Director, okay.
So, yes, that's correct. There's going to be signage that's going to be installed at these two spaces, you know, in order to delineate the area, but the two signs are definitely what we're going to use as the markings for those two spaces.
And there'd be some level of site prep for the road top? In other words, it's going to be crushed rock, it's dirt right now, if I believe, right? It's just compacted earth.
We'll have to look to see what kind of improvements to actually mark it, but yeah, you know, whether it's to provide a weathered surface.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wright?
I also go to that hardware store quite a bit, drive by that parking lot almost every weekend, and see that it is also full. I also concur with Commissioner Ferguson on his opinion on the violation of the policy. But as a potential way to mitigate some of that concern, is it possible to make those dirt spaces a no overnight parking zone? To have people that bring those additional cars be forced to park their cars in another location to increase the chances of availability for that for the general public who do want to utilize those trails?
So, what we would have to do is actually delineate the RVs correctly, and then we'll create signage to make sure that there's no overnight parking on, like especially like on the south side where everybody's parking. That would have to be signed correctly. So, the areas that we do not want overnight parking needs to be clearly marked and enforced by the police.
But it is possible.
It is possible.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Leal?
Thank you. Question for the applicant as to, I was rereading kind of the agreement that, or the resolution that council made in terms of these 13 parking places in particular to this area. And the question I have is related to why these two spaces were chosen in this lot as opposed to other areas within the dirt lot? What benefits to these locations, to these spots were over other areas, or other spots in the same area?
I wasn't privy to the determination or the location of these spots. I believe it was just more of, you know, they were closer to the trees and, you know, it was, I guess it was more of a logical place to put these spots. I think if, you know, if we, if it's possible to move them around, I'm sure that's possible. I think for our settlement agreement, we need to provide two spaces at the spot, but I don't know what, I don't know the context as to if these were the concrete location.
The reason why I ask is because these two locations look to be directly uphill from what appears to be in my untrained eye, city wastewater infrastructure, which I do realize there's probably going to be a skinny metal pole designating these signs. However, I'm just thinking of protecting city infrastructure, and in the event that these spaces are directly what appears to be a slight upgrade up from that infrastructure, you may see where I'm going with this, in the event that there's a vehicle malfunction or lost the brakes or something, these vehicles are substantially larger than private-use vehicles and could potentially cause damage to the city infrastructure. Now, playing this through, I assume these vehicles will be insured and registered, and that will be handled by the RV owner's insurance, but that's perhaps a risk, given the settlement and given the location and the options we have in this parking lot that we may be able to avoid. Given timing of when these spaces need to be approved and the options we may have in front of us tonight to change these two locations and where our flexibility is to choose two different locations within this dirt lot, I don't know what those are, but I just want to raise that in terms of context to existing city infrastructure and if these two spots are the best two spots in this dirt lot, given that this dirt lot is designated for two spots per the agreement that was done prior. So, I just make that comment. I don't know what options we have in front of us tonight, but it seems like perhaps there's additional spots and, or if there's additional context as to why these two are the best ones, I'd love to hear it.
So, Commissioner O'Leal, good evening, Honorable Chair and Commissioners, Acting Planning Director Christian Murdock. We believe there is flexibility within the confines of that overall dirt lot parking area to identify the two spaces, and so I think staff had identified some preferred locations, but it is within the commission's discretion, within that focused area, to consider alternate locations as well.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, it would be good if you could extend the length of these spots too, so they were about 50 feet long if possible. And the other issue, when you stay in an RV and most of the stuff's propane-driven, if they're tilted at a slight angle, the appliances do not work well at all. So, it's also quite important that if you've got a Bobcat or something, these things are level and maybe put down some crush stone or something so it's easy to use. They sell leveling blocks for RVs, but if the ground has got a sufficient slope, they're really challenging to put in and get right so all the appliances work. So, if I can encourage you to do those, that would, I think, save a lot of pain.
Commissioner Hauser?
Thank you. If it pleases the Chair and the rest of the commission, I know that the public, if there are any members of the public online, have probably been waiting, and I think it would be helpful to hear any input they may have. Would it be okay if we continued our questions and deliberations after the public hearing?
I am fine with that. I think of just following typical process. We'll give an opportunity to the applicant to speak. Does that, any opposition to that on the commission? Okay, I think, so at this time, I'd like to ask the applicant if you would like to say anything?
I have nothing further.
Okay.
I'll just answer questions.
Sounds good. Then I will open it to public comment. Seeing no one in the audience, I'm wondering if anyone's called in?
The only member that we have on the phone is Director Reese.
Okay. Assuming that Director Reese does not have a public comment, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Applicant doesn't need a rebuttal for that, so, thank you, Vice Chair Hauser, I think that was beneficial, just in case someone was on the phone. Does anyone have additional questions right now? Questions, comments? We're in the deliberation portion. One item that I thought, especially because we do have it in our purview to kind of work with different locations within this parking lot, it sounds like, I was wondering if it's possible to designate these two spots farther west so they can be pull-through spots, and then perhaps installing a mountable curb or a rubber ramp in the gutter to allow the vehicles to pull forward rather than trying to back up in this very tiny parking lot?
Are there grade considerations for that?
Grading-wise, I mean, there is some slope towards the right-of-way. I'm not an oversized vehicle owner, but in my personal opinion, it seems doable.
If we do that, can we make a requirement that they have to chalk their wheels if they're going to be parked on that incline?
I think, yeah, chalk their wheels. I think that may relate to what Commissioner O'Leal was bringing up, if there's brake failure, whatnot.
If I can throw in a comment?
Sure. Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, in order to have the appliances work, you've got to have a level RV. So, essentially, a leveling block would go, would be put under the, and you'd pull the tires up on top of a set of leveling blocks. So, the vehicle on a slope like that would have to be chalked by, almost to make it functional.
There's no way it could roll out into the street?
Oh, no, no. It's just, it's like a ramps when you work on your car. You pull it up, and it just sits there, you know, up a couple of feet so you can get under it to get to the oil filter or whatever. That's kind of an arrangement where it's sloped on one side and flat on the top, so it looks, so you pull up the slope side, and then the wheel sits on the flat part, or maybe in a depression. It's, you know, it's very, very safe, safer than a chalk even.
Just looking at, just looking at the grades, it might not be possible to do that.
Okay.
There is a grade there, and then there's a curb, so to do a drive-through type of scenario, that might not be possible. If you did it the other way, then you'd be driving from the right-of-way to private property and then back out, so we would not do that.
Is it not possible to perhaps just, I mean, the curb, is it possible to replace it with a mountable curb or a 3-inch curb? I mean, I've parked in this parking lot with just SUV, and it can be hard to maneuver.
Yeah, and I'm just kind of like, just looking at, you know, I mean, it's the 2D picture, but it looks like there's, looks like there's a definite grade to it. It's possibly that, you know, it's possible that we can go out and look at it, you know? It might just be a visual, something visual that I'm not seeing here in this picture, but, well, we would have to go and take a look.
Okay, yeah, I'd like that. I could not imagine trying to back out of a spot in a 30-plus-foot vehicle, or I guess for this item, it would be no more than 30 feet, which I think we might need to reconsider, but if it's possible, I would appreciate looking at the feasibility of making the spots a pull-through spot. Commissioner Ferguson?
Is there somebody from staff or Public Works who can confirm, is this a sanitary sewer pumping station that's right in front of the proposed spots here?
I believe that's a water pump station.
Drinking water, stormwater?
It is, North Coles County.
And do they have an easement there then?
I believe it's a lot, and it's their lot.
Okay.
We don't see the, oh, no, then, it might be on state land, so.
Has any study been conducted as to the underground utilities? These are sizable pipes if we're talking about drinking water, about the traffic rating of putting large vehicles directly on top of them and where those might pass underneath? Can someone just confirm that's been looked at?
I would assume that these, I mean, because it's a pump station, that they're probably, they're probably deep enough that...
I mean, they free air right in front of this parking spot?
I don't have the ASBIL plans to see how these, these lines run, and that would be a consideration.
Just given that we have no discretion to postpone or not approve this, it seems like a bit of a red flag that there's critical infrastructure directly underneath, something we're proposing to put heavy vehicles. If this were any other type of hearing, we would, I wouldn't even consider moving forward without knowing that that had been vetted out. It's a little disconcerting that we don't have any confirmation there either.
So Commissioner Ferguson, I think that is an item that you could consider as a condition of approval. And in the event that the technical check did not pan out, the space could not be operated. I think that's perfectly reasonable to consider. If it's the will of the commission to do that, and we can help you with that language for a potential condition.
Or if it just means moving to a different space within the lot like we discussed earlier, right, further away from the critical infrastructure, wherever that might be.
I think, I mean, I don't know how the facility is designed, but perhaps a condition in any instance to make sure that it's not going to adversely impact the infrastructure could be something the commission considers.
Yeah, or bollards to make it so that it doesn't become a de facto drive-through spot, right? If those can't sustain being driven over by RVs and people drive straight out of that spot as it is now, I know because I've done it.
Police.
There's nothing that says you can't do that there. If that's something that can't handle that, and I doubt it was engineered to be driven over by, you know, recreational vehicles, then we should just put in, just planning in advance to make sure it doesn't create problems. I don't know if any of you noticed, but there was, they broke a 24-inch water main in Slope Boulevard for basically doing that same thing in the city and eroded all of Stern Grove. So it does happen.
I would be in support of adding conditions for the traffic rating as well as conditions pertaining to making sure that we're not using North Coast County Water District's property without discussion. I would also be in favor of a condition that gives engineering staff the leeway to decide what the safest and most unencumbered space within this area would be. And then I would also, and I would love the rest of the commission to weigh in here, I think it's like, the questions that we're asking seem to be like really important feasibility questions. And I think, you know, given that this is kind of happening quickly, I'm concerned that there may be analysis where we're not thinking to ask the question right now. Like, you know, if Commissioner Ferguson hadn't said, "Is this traffic rated for infrastructure?" I wouldn't have thought of that. So I wonder if we would be in favor of adding kind of a general condition that prescribes that, you know, at a staff level, we'll do a full safety analysis to make sure that there are other, that there aren't any other kind of infrastructure or, you know, just, just to make sure that all of these items are captured before it's actually implemented, but we don't slow you guys down. What does everyone think of that?
I'm wondering if, well, two items, if the applicant is capable of running such a study just in the timeframe that we have. Obviously, it won't come back to commission, but whenever the stalls need to be implemented. And then I'm also wondering if, if such a general condition can be applied without any concern in being too general.
Yes, that's correct. We can diligently look at the, the ASBILs in the area and make sure that we avoid any critical infrastructure.
Okay.
Can you guys USA as well and maybe if there is something that seems concerning pothole? Only if it seems concerning. I don't want to spend a bunch of money on potholes.
Yeah, and that's typical if we're going to be drilling a hole, so...
Right.
So we'll do the USA for standard purposes.
Perfect. And, yes, while staff discusses, perhaps we'll circle back to my other question. Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, it looks to me it'd be safer if you'd park the RVs perpendicular to the way they're at, you know, just rotate them 90 degrees and use the access. I know it would take out more parking spots in this parking lot, but it would just, it would certainly get you away from the infrastructure and it looks a lot flatter to me from my going to Ace Hardware and looking at this lot in real, real life. So you just rotate them 90 degrees and make them, you know, pull in spots, maybe put a little bit of a turning circle at the far end where the parking lot dead ends.
Commissioner Wright?
I would also be concerned about making sure that whatever vehicles parked there do pull as far forward as possible to allow the use of the other spaces and not encumber those other spaces as well. I do trust staff to make the appropriate decision if they need to relocate it in that dirt patch to put it in the proper place, but please consider the turning radiuses before doing that. If it was me looking at driving an RV at what's proposed, I don't think you're going to make that turn and get that, that vehicle in there. And once you get it in there, I don't think you're getting it back out. So I'm a little concerned about how tight that's going to be.
I guess kind of circling back to my question, if we were to have a general condition of approval, is that something that the city can accept?
In general terms, yes. So I think part of our concern that prompted, you know, the discussion here was that conditions of approval need to be, you need to be able to determine compliance. And if it's too general, someone could argue that we haven't fulfilled the condition of approval and challenge the city's action. So I think we would want to hear more specifically the types of safety elements or tie it in some, to some specific measurable outcome. And also keep in mind that it hopefully would not unduly delay or frustrate the operation of the space. We're not aware of any in-service date required by the settlement agreement. The date that we believe is relevant and applicable here is issuance of the permit. So some reasonable period of time, let's just say a couple of weeks to perform a safety analysis. We're not aware at this point in time of how that would be inconsistent with the settlement agreement. And it seems perfectly rational based on some of the water infrastructure concerns, for instance. But maybe to articulate any other specific safety analysis that would be desired or to the extent it's general related to an operational characteristic of the RVs themselves, such as assess the area of operations for potential infrastructure impacts based on the weight of the vehicle or some, some amount of specificity, either in the scope of the analysis or the impacts that are desired to be avoided.
Okay, thank you. That gives us some direction. I am taking notes, so not seeing any other questions, we could start to try to form a motion. I mean, another item that wasn't discussed related to the water infrastructure is if there's any concern with soil contamination. But I am guessing that will be, that would be a much more in-depth study that likely Public Works and the city cannot perform right now. And there is already a parking lot there. Vice Chair Hauser?
So just to answer Mr. Murdock's question about the additional specificity to kind of what I intended, I think what Chair Berman just said about infrastructure is like on the nail on the head. I would also add that staff assess the level of compaction to make sure that the soil is appropriate to support the vehicles. And then I would, through the chair, I would think that the contamination issue of like the black water is probably going back to the operations of the program that's not under our purview because it's specific, because it's specifically, yeah.
I hear what you're saying. I was honestly thinking more just typical vehicle runoff, which, which could potentially even be more of a concern contamination-wise. But there is already a parking lot there.
But if it was tarred, it would be more resistant to...
I mean, that, here's a question. This area wasn't initially intended to be a parking lot. I mean, it's, it's not paved, it's not striped, but it's used as a parking lot every day. It's quite full, especially on the weekends. Given that this is always probably going to be a parking lot, is it possible, and not necessarily right away, but to consider, for the city to consider making this a paved parking lot that has some form of containment of runoff? For example, it has appropriate compaction and structural section to withstand the size vehicle that will park there. Now, I know that's, that's a lofty request and question, but if this were a more proper parking lot, I don't think anyone would be disappointed. I don't know if the applicant has any, a thought on that. I am assuming it is not in our purview to require that of this program. Is that correct?
Well, I would offer these observations for the time being and maybe think more about it. First off, it's not the project the applicant has proposed. And so you'd be changing the nature of the project, which I think causes me some concern. If this project is inadequate, perhaps the remedy is to not approve the project. You'd be changing, you know, not, I don't know, fundamentally, it might be a little too dramatic, but significantly the project from what's proposed. Secondly, I don't know if any assessment has been performed as to the city's ability to fund and carry out a project in the timeline for that. Capital improvement projects are supposed to undergo a particular process in the city, and there could be significant associated delays even if the funding is available. And so I would have concerns about the city being able to carry out its obligations under the settlement agreement to put this, these parking spaces in service. Granted, there's no specific deadline, but I think, you know, safety assessment over a couple of weeks, sounds reasonable to me. A Public Works capital improvement project that could take months, if not a year or more, to construct, I would have concerns about that with respect to the settlement agreement. To your specific concerns about runoff, there may be other measures like installation of, you know, straw waddles and such around the downslope component of this that maybe could be worked in to help get, get to some degree, some containment. And as to the concern about, you know, vehicle fluids and such, you know, being discharged, you know, a fair argument could be made that paving it could actually increase the transport of those chemicals and substances. So I don't know if it's a slam dunk to address that concern simply by paving it. An additional runoff and such could occur as a result of that.
Sure. Thank you. For the record, even understanding that it doesn't relate to the project in front of us, I do think that it would be beneficial for the city to eventually make this either official parking or give some definition to it. But I understand that doesn't relate to what we're looking at right now. Okay, so some of the notes that I have on possible conditions, requesting that staff and Public Works run through a due diligence feasibility study on locating the proper location for these park, the oversized vehicle parking spots. I think that encompasses a lot of the concerns because that would wrap in the concerns with loads on underground infrastructure as well as the, the capability of the soil there right now, whether it needs to be crushed, crushed AB or whatever it is. Are there any, I did mention it would be, I think it would be beneficial to make these spots pull-through spots. I think it would be very difficult to back out and try to three-point turn out of here. So to the ability of Public Works's discretion on how that can come to fruition, if that's possible. Are there any other conditions?
I would still like to see no overnight parking and some kind of roll-away protection.
Commissioner Wright mentioned no overnight parking. So I guess clearly defining who's allowed to park overnight there. Because, because I guess saying no overnight parking would kind of negate the permit that's being allowed here, but I guess defining where these permit spots are allowing overnight parking and then the rest of the parking lot would not allow overnight parking.
Overnight parking by permit only.
Yeah, overnight parking by permit only. What was the other one, Commissioner Wright?
Roll-away protections.
Roll-away protection.
I would add erosion control BMPs, as staff had recommended, as well as just confirming legal property rights as we explore the pull-through to make sure that we're not encroaching onto NCCWG's property without their approval.
I was kind of thinking that could lump into the feasibility study because it wouldn't be feasible for, or I don't, I guess it could be a separate condition if needed.
If we're limiting the feasibility study to infrastructure and like compaction?
The kind of language.
I mean, I'm, I'm open to it either way as long as it's looked at.
Yeah. Okay.
95%.
Maybe, I don't know if a boundary has been studied in this area where the actual property line with a boundary survey or easements or encumbrances?
No, we haven't, we haven't conducted a survey, but we've been looking at the, the county's GIS just to, to get a, you know, approximation of where the boundary is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Liel?
Thank you. Couple of comments. One is around just a, I know there's been a lot of talk about pull-through on the site and I initially brought the site location or the parking space location. Perhaps another location within that lot to explore is the southern southwestern end. It looks like that's probably a little easier to back into and then pull out onto San Pedro So that might be a little easier to navigate. The other comment slash maybe a condition of approval I wanted to suggest is this parking lot's kind of a make-your-own-parking-space parking lot, especially on the weekends. A lot of parking spaces that you wouldn't think are parking spaces may, are made, especially by, for example, four-wheel-drive vehicles like Jeeps. And my concern with that is, is based off of the documents, there don't appear to be any on-the-ground markings delineating the spaces. We have signage, but we need at least 10 feet wide for these parking spaces. And I was wondering if, I realize this parking lot's unimproved, so maybe challenging to do on-the-ground designations or some other indicator, but basically, or perhaps maybe it's additional poles, no parking between these signs except for having a purvent, but being able to delineate the width of the parking spaces for these vehicles in this lot so that the make-your-own-parking-space doesn't encumber these, these spaces if they are, are vacated for any amount of time. So either something on the ground or two poles that says there's no parking between these lines for each spot that delineate that, so it's, so folks don't kind of encumber a foot or two. don't kind of encumber a foot or two into it, so it's harder to park. I think, and yeah, just my two comments.
Commissioner Wright.
I'm also slightly concerned about the turning radius to get into the parking spot for the large vehicle, but I'm also worried like on the weekend when everybody parks there and makes their own parking spot, people don't always pull all the way forward. What happens if we get these people with this 30-foot vehicle in there that want to get out and can't? So I think we need to not just delineate the width, but also make sure that people, for both the permitted vehicles and the unpermitted vehicles, leave sufficient room to navigate the space.
And perhaps that's something that can be a part of public works' feasibility study. I think if I were to do the feasibility, feasibility study here, I'd have to kind of look at access for everyone, too. So I'd imagine that could fall under that requirement. So feasibility of access. I still personally think a pull-through spot would be the best for these recreational large vehicles.
You have a recommended location on that lot for said space?
Without knowing the infrastructure underneath, I would say the northwest location where the pull-through would be that they have to turn into the parking lot and then the front of the vehicle would point to San Pedro Avenue. So then they could pull forward to get out and granted, some curb adjustments would be needed. That's kind of how I visualize it at least, if feasible. Commissioner Hauser?
Sure. I don't want to like cut any, anyone off if there's still more comments, but I would be willing to make a motion if we have language, like condition of approval language that covers the like, I would say eight things that we talked about.
Quite a few things. We'll hold that thought, and then I see Commissioner Liel has a comment.
Yeah, I just have a quick comment and perhaps clarification. I believe that parking lot currently has no overnight parking, according to signs that I think are currently in place. So in terms of adding anything related to no overnight parking to clarify those spaces that may be unnecessary if we're thinking of adding that as a condition of approval. But just wanted to clarify because I know that got brought up a couple of times.
Yeah, I think anything that, that public works could really do to eliminate confusion because I think especially this neighborhood, the people that live in this neighborhood, if they know that this is typically no overnight parking and then they start to see two oversized vehicles there all the time and it's not clearly signed, I think there's going to be a lot of complaints and confusion. So just to whatever extent possible, if, if the city can just clearly define this parking lot. To help staff with kind of drafting the many conditions that we're talking about, here are some of my notes. So clearly defining the parking spots, or at least where permit-only parking are allowed in the parking lot. The rest would be no overnight parking. Clarification on the property line and encumbrances in, in this parking lot to ensure that we're not proposing vehicles park on land that we don't have rights to. Erosion control measures, just to contain runoff to the best of our abilities. Rollaway protection, given the, the slopes that are here, the minor slopes, but still significant for a large vehicle. An overall feasibility study performed by public works that includes but is not limited to the appropriate structural strength of the soil to support the loads anticipated with the oversized vehicles. Confirming that the parking will not adversely impact infrastructure, underground infrastructure. I think we can encompass that just in general, not just underground. And then where feasible, implement a pull-through parking spot. Oh, and also with the feasibility study, confirming access will be feasible. Did I miss anything? Okay.
All right. So here is our attempt to capture those several points, and we hope that the commission will, will seek any input from the applicant with respect to these. So first, prior to program operation, the applicant shall delineate the program parking spaces and non-program parking spaces in the parking area. Prior to program operation, the applicant shall evaluate the potential to locate the program spaces in a pull-through configuration and construct and operate the spaces as pull-through spaces if, if able to be safely operated as determined by the city engineer. Prior to program operation, the applicant shall conduct an evaluation of the program area to confirm, one, that operation of the program spaces will not adversely impact underground utilities across which the OSVs may operate, including but not limited to North Coast County Water District underground pipes. And, two, that the soil compaction level is suitable for the vehicle weight of OSVs intended for parking in the program spaces. Prior to program operation, the applicant shall evaluate the necessity for rollaway protection to protect adjacent critical infrastructure, including but not limited to North Coast County Water District pump infrastructure. Prior to program operation, the applicant shall install stormwater control BMPs, such as but not limited to straw wattles, and shall maintain such during operation of the program spaces. And then lastly, this is a carryover from the prior public hearing, all program participants shall comply with all Bay Area Air Quality Management District regulations applicable to generators proposed for operation at the program spaces.
That sounds good to me. To be clear, regarding the erosion control, back to the contamination concern, in my eyes, my, my worry with the contamination is more infiltration of oil or gasoline, so be it. I understand that there's not much we could do without repaving that surface, but I, I do still support erosion control measures for more surface drainage like straw wattles. So I have no comment on the condition. I just wanted to clarify, my concerns with contamination are more the fact that it's a pervious surface.
Was no overnight parking in there, too?
I think that got clarified that it's already existing.
My understanding it's not, so.
That whole area right there is no overnight parking currently posted. Thank you.
Vice Chair Hauser?
So I thought it was very impressive that staff dropped it all of that in three minutes. So agreeing with Chair Berman's thought about infiltration, but understanding that that's not the scope of this, I would be happy to make a motion if it pleases the chair.
Yes, please. Thank you.
I move that the Planning Commission finds the project as exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act approved Coastal Development Permit CDP-438-22 by adopting the resolution included as attachment A to the staff report, including conditions of approval and exhibit A to the resolution and, and those that we just added, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Domarat?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes with six in favor, one opposed. All right. Did I count that right?
You did. I was assuming that the lights would indicate differently, and they didn't. So thank you.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Onto the next item. And remind me again, if anyone needs to recuse, do they recuse before I introduce the item or after?
Chair, as you read the item and introduce it, then the recusing decision makers would then announce their conflict.
Got it. The logical way. Thanks. It's been a long night. Okay, so file number 2022-012 Coastal Development Permit CDP-437-22 to establish one on-street temporary safe parking program parking space, 30 feet by 10 feet. The on-street parking space would be reserved for the use by a program participant living in an operational recreational vehicle, trailer, or motor home with operating restroom facilities for a limited period of time on the west side of the Francisco Boulevard public right-of-way. East of 2400 Francisco Boulevard, assessor parcel number 016322230, and approximately 32 feet north of the Clarendon Road and Francisco Boulevard intersection. Recommended SEQA action is Class 1 and Class 4 categorical exemptions, SEQA guidelines section 15301 and 15304, and common sense exception, SEQA guidelines section 15061B3. Recommended action is approve as conditioned. Can we have a staff report, please? Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Commissioner Liel.
Thank you. I do need to recuse myself from this item due to ownership of real property in the direct vicinity of this project location. So given that this is the last item on tonight's agenda, I will see you all at our next meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Liel. Commissioner Ferguson?
Been informed that I also need to recuse myself from this item due to owning real property in the vicinity. I will also be leaving.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. All right, can, are we allowed to do the staff report now, or do we have to wait until they leave?
Departure would be preferred.
Okay. No pressure. Okay, thank you. Staff report, please.
Good evening again. I am Senior Planner Bonnie O'Connor. Under this item, the Planning Commission is being asked to consider the approval of Coastal Development Permit CDP-437-22 for the establishment and minor improvements of one on-street temporary parking, temporary safe parking program parking space on the west side of Francisco Boulevard public right-of-way. As background to tonight's item, the City Council adopted Resolution 12-2022 in February of this year, which approved the city's participation in a three-year temporary safe parking program that will provide up to 13 parking spaces for exclusive use by program participants living in an operational recreational vehicle, trailer, or motor home with operating toilet facilities while program participants seek permanent housing solutions. The resolution also authorized the city manager to execute the operations agreement with the Pacifica Resource Center, which details the terms, provisions, and obligations of the Pacifica Resource Center and the city to implement the program. This action was also followed by the City Council's approval of the location of the 13 program parking spaces as part of a settlement agreement in November 2021. This approval recognized the spaces located in the coastal zone could require approval of a coastal development permit. As detailed in the staff report, staff found that the project, which includes the establishment of one parking program space along Francisco Boulevard, placement of pavement markings and installation of signage meets the definition of development per Pacifica Municipal Code and does require issuance of a coastal development permit. Staff's analysis, as detailed in the staff report, finds the project is consistent with the city's certified local coastal program. Additionally, staff's analysis finds that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Therefore, staff recommends approving the project as conditioned to support the temporary safe parking program approved by the City Council. That concludes my presentation. Deputy Director of Public Works Sam Batista is present to represent the applicant's role of this project. Chief of Police Stan Seidel is present, and Anita Reese from the Pacifica Resource Center is available via phone to help answer any questions regarding the operation of the temporary safe parking program. Thank you.
Thank you, Senior Planner O'Connor. If it's okay with everyone, I think I'll open it up, or I'll allow the applicant to speak if he so desires.
I'm here to answer questions. I have no other further presentation.
Okay, thank you. And then I'll open it up to public comment. Seeing no one in the audience, is there anyone on the phone?
The only member on the phone is Director Reese.
And Chair Berman, if you'll allow me, to reiterate that the Planning Commission received a written public comment this evening applicable to this public hearing, and also received a written public comment in advance of tonight's public hearing, which staff shared with the commission, has printed and provided in the rear of the council chambers, and is also available on the Planning Commission's webpage. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's no public comments. I'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to the commission for deliberation and questions. Commissioner Wright?
I assume all previous principles discussed in the last two still apply. I assume all previous principles discussed in the last two still apply. Is that fair to say?
If your comment is referring to that there's litigation related to this, these permits are being considered as part of a settlement agreement, and that there is a May 29 deadline for the city to obtain coastal development permits to allow operation of these spaces, then yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Domarat?
So I guess as part of the condition for approval, we would assume the city would do due diligence in looking at markings of the roadway, making sure there's enough backup space. It appears, we don't have the picture here, that there will be nothing, no parking allowed in front of where that RV space is, so that shouldn't be a problem. But just to make sure that the appropriate street markings and signage is adequate for the safety for that region. Thank you.
Yes, we will look at that.
And Commissioner Domarat, staff could help prepare a condition of approval that addressed an appropriate buffer space, perhaps to the city engineer's discretion, not less than a minimum width at the rear of the space if the commission so desired.
I think so. Staff has been very good at that tonight. Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, I actually do have some concerns with this location. Prior to this meeting, the commission received a comment from the North Coast Water District, and I'm wondering if staff can elaborate on the discussions that Public Works has had with the property owner, because it seems like they are quite opposed to this location for this program.
Well, I can start.
Thank you.
The property owner does not own the parking location. The parking location that's proposed is in the public right-of-way, which is under the domain of the city of Pacifica. And so there has been a comment from an adjacent property owner, in this case, the North Coast County Water District. They've stated in their comment letter some various concerns about the potential location of a safe parking program space in this location. The Water District has been involved in communicating with the city for some period in relation to a potential parking space for oversized vehicles on the street adjacent to their property. You know, the city has considered those concerns and those similar types of concerns from many different property owners in the city, including residents, has determined that it's in the city's best interests to approve a program that allows for on-street parking of these types of vehicles in locations enumerated by the City Council. And as it relates to, you know, the proximity of these types of parking spaces to critical government facilities, it's important to note that outside of the coastal zone, even though the Planning Commission won't see those for permitting action, the city has actually authorized a number of these spaces immediately adjacent to its property at the Corporation Yard at 151 Milagro. And so we are not asking folks to do something entirely different than what the city is willing to do itself to ensure a safe program and implementation of a safe parking program.
Thank you. The, so, yes, I do understand that the parking program is proposed in the city right-of-way, but is the applicant responsible to maintain the frontage of their property? I'm sorry, not the applicant. Is the property owner responsible to maintain the frontage of their property, which would, I understand, be the sidewalk here? Is that correct? So if the Water District owned the parking lot that they used, are they responsible for, you know, just typical neighborly maintenance of their property frontage, which would be the sidewalk?
So to my knowledge, under the Streets and Highways Code, property owners are responsible for maintenance of the adjacent sidewalk improvement, including replacement if and when it constitutes a safety hazard. I don't know if any special legal considerations apply when that adjacent property owner is another public agency, but I would say as a general rule, like for regular private property owners, yes, they have a legal obligation to maintain those adjacent sidewalk improvements.
And I'm not aware of any different obligations on public agencies.
Okay. Does that end at the curb, or does that expand into the gutter, for example?
Yes, it's sidewalk, curb, and gutter. All that is integral.
Especially if the adjacent property owner is actively opposed to this location, I have concerns with imposing on their requirement to maintain the sidewalk. I mean, granted, sure, the vehicles won't be parked on the sidewalk, but this road is also pretty narrow, even without a large vehicle parked here. Yeah, I just, I have concerns with, especially the opposition from the adjacent property owner. We did ask questions with the previous items regarding roadway width, and I do understand that there's 20 feet from effectively the curb to the center line, so that would allow for a 10-foot parking spot and a 10-foot traveling. But it's really tight here, especially with cars turning, and then accounting for, if you have large vehicles, and the side mirrors are often wider than eight and a half feet. Yeah, so I just wanted to voice my concerns with this location. In addition to being, in my opinion, one of the gateways to our downtown, I mean, we're working so hard on the Sharp Park specific plan, and staff's working so hard. We really want to evolve the Sharp Park area, and, you know, a car traveling from Half Moon Bay to visit Sharp Park will exit here, and the first thing they see will be, you know, oversized vehicles. So those are my comments. Commissioner Hauser?
Thank you, Chair. I concur wholeheartedly with the Chair, and I want to elaborate on part of why I feel like that's a really, this is a really tough spot to do this. In the letter from North Coast County Water District, they are worried about reduced access to emergency response facilities. It says, "District employees are critical to emergency response, and the headquarters serves as an emergency operations center. In the event of emergency, the district headquarters becomes a command center." And I mean, it goes on. I know this is part of the public record, but this, I went over to the site after seeing this letter, and the location of the oversized vehicle parking space that's proposed is close to both the sliding gate along Francisco, as well as the sliding gate across from where Stucky sustained. I don't remember what the storefront is now. But, you know, while I was there, I saw four or five different vehicles from North Coast. Like, it was in 20 minutes. There are vehicles actively coming and going here. So I think that, yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't know what to do with the obligations that we have for May 29, but I would concur that this is not a spot that I would feel ready to support tonight.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Domarat?
I guess I'm just making an assumption that in the development of this plan, these locations were all vetted with everyone in the community and the city. So the Water District, as the owners of the area, were aware that this was going to happen a year ago, correct? So I guess my question is, we're at that point where we probably have to approve this anyway, but maybe it's one of these where we then look at it in six months or a year from now, and if it's not working, then we look at moving it, you know, do kind of a demonstration. But these locations, I don't think we're here to vote on whether the location is appropriate or not. It is. If it's a safety issue, then we can comment on it. But I would think that the location is already kind of locked in. Is that correct?
Well, the City Council has identified this as an appropriate location for the safe parking program.
Somebody can appeal the City Council decision, but...
They can appeal the Planning Commission's action on this item, whatever that action may ultimately be. And to your question about safety, safety is relevant and, you know, generally within the commission's discretion. But very specifically, we should be considering the findings for approval of a coastal development permit, and they relate primarily to local coastal program policies and the consistency of this application with those policies. Specifically to Commissioner, to Vice Chair Hauser's concerns, this application is for one space. And so when you're considering the location of the rolling gate and access for the district's vehicles, this space would be some distance, you know, 30 to 40 feet perhaps away from where that rolling gate on Francisco Boulevard would be located. And so it's not clear to me what direct impact the operation of this space, for instance, would have on the district's ability to access its property in the event of an emergency.
Commissioner Wright?
Just a real basic thing. I assume that Public Works considers the blocking of any sightlines for interning vehicles and things, so that we don't have any kids getting run over by bicycles with these large vehicles. It's often hard to see. I assume you took that all into consideration when thinking about this spot?
Yes, we did look at sightlines, and we actually, that's part of our criteria that we look at for our WSPs.
Commissioner Godwin? Oh, I'm sorry. Were you done with your questions? Okay. Commissioner Godwin?
Do we have the flexibility of not implementing this space and maybe going back to the Ace Hardware site or that parking lot and adding a space there? I know that would not make a lot of people happy, but do we have any flexibility about saying one of these does not need to be done while we add to somewhere else so we get to the legally required number of spaces? Or is that something that we don't have an option?
I think that would be up to the applicant.
I don't think so.
So my initial reaction, Commissioner Godwin, is that the commission would not be able to revisit its prior action on the San Pedro Avenue site, given that it took a vote and decided that application. As to this location, again, the City Council has approved this location, and it's the commission's decision or obligation to determine whether the findings can be made for approval of a coastal development permit. It's not in the commission's discretion to determine whether it's, the space should be in the program or not.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Hauser?
I don't know if I have more comments. I think to Commissioner Domarat's question, the letter from the Water District said that they had been voicing concerns since July of 2020, and that they continued to do so. So I don't think this is like a new, oh, by the way, yeah.
If I may, thank you, Vice Chair Hauser. I failed to follow up on Commissioner Domarat's point in that regard. I cannot speak for what the Water District's understanding is or was at any particular point in time. I'm aware they've had multiple communications with the city, including with the city manager. They've reflected their perspective on some of those communications in the letter. However, it's not clear to me they had a full understanding of the evolution of this issue. As I mentioned in an earlier public hearing this evening, the City Council went through evaluation of a number of options to respond to the increasing number of oversized vehicles being parked on the city's streets. It considered private property programs. It considered public right-of-way programs. Didn't want either of those programs, frankly. Initiated and enacted an oversized vehicle parking ordinance to strictly regulate the parking of such vehicles, and then the city was sued. And so I think, it's my impression that the understanding conveyed in the Water District's letter seems to have reflected a conversation with the city that reflected an earlier point in time prior to the filing of this litigation. And so the understanding they had that no such space on the street was being considered by the city seemed to have been true at that point in time. And for whatever reason, it seems they may not have been aware of the evolution of the issues in the city, including the litigation. And it may have come to their attention relatively recently that spaces on the street were back, back in consideration by the city. That's my best understanding of the timeline and chronology of the various points.
Can we make it a condition that Public Works do their best to address the concerns of the property owner in implementing this parking space somewhat in that location? Or is that too general?
Well, exactly. I think, Commissioner Wright, we would need to hear more about what steps you think the city could take to address the commenter's concern.
Moving forwards or backwards 10 feet to make something easier for them.
So the space as it's proposed currently, to my knowledge, is, it abuts the southerly red-curved no-parking zone. And so to shift it anyplace else could jeopardize additional on-street parking, which I believe is also a concern for the Water District and their customers and employees coming to the customer service component of their operations at that site. There was mention made of an application the Water District has filed with the city for a significant project on their site to demolish one of the existing buildings and then to rehabilitate another portion of the building. And so if and when that project is approved by the city, there will be a considerable period of construction activity, which has certain impacts potentially on occupants of this space, but also would mean that there's no direct impact on the Water District's operations, which was one of the concerns that they had. And so I don't know that they can have it both ways with respect to the comments about impacts of their operations, but also impacts during the construction phase. So the commission may want to consider that. Again, it's speculative as to whether that project will be approved and what the timeline is for that. At this point in time, the application has not been, you know, processed and decided by the city. But there are a number of considerations to be made about how this space may actually affect the district's operations in the way stated in the letter. And again, the program is for three years, as contemplated now by the City Council. It's not a permanent program as it's intended today. And so as it relates to the long-term operations by the Water District, you know, if and when their, you know, new project is approved and constructed, you know, it's very likely that there will be very limited overlap between this temporary safe parking program and their ongoing operations of their renovated facilities there.
Kind of jumping, I'm not seeing any questions, jumping back to our purview and the process of this program and kind of the rock and a hard place that the commission's in right now. Currently, there's, is it correct to say that there's currently no restriction for oversized vehicle on this stretch of Francisco Boulevard? That might be a question for Chief.
Yes, I believe that is correct.
Yeah, so there's no restriction.
I believe there is no restriction in that area.
Okay. Commissioner Domarat? Oh, wait, Commissioner Godwin. Sorry, going cross-eyed.
Chief, does that include height restriction? Is there any, because some of these vehicles can be quite tall.
There is no height restriction, just for parking, in general parking areas, no.
So I could park a 14-foot-tall RV there, and that wouldn't, even though that might affect some sightlines, and that would be fine? Okay.
I guess my, kind of touching on that, my understanding of the stopping sight distance isn't necessarily, I think if it's beyond a normal car height, me personally, I don't have concern that additional sight distance would be impaired. And I think the red painted curb at the corner probably was implemented there, because that's probably the corner sight distance, like the sightline. So I personally don't have a concern with the height of the vehicle there. I guess kind of my previous question, asking if the existing condition on the road, if... I guess kind of my previous question, asking if the existing condition on the road, if oversized vehicles are technically allowed because they're not disallowed, I don't see oversized vehicles parking there, from what I recall. Perhaps Chief, do you, assuming that your team is around there maybe more often than I am, is it common to see oversized vehicles parked there?
At this location, I think I've only seen one once.
Okay.
Myself. I, I don't have any report back from staff as about how often, but I do travel that, that route myself almost on a daily basis, and I've rarely seen one there.
Yeah. I mean, I, so what I'm toying with right now personally is currently, without this program implemented, people that own oversized vehicles, they don't choose to park here. They're not parking here. And especially if the commission has, and the adjacent property owner has concerns with designating for oversized vehicles to park here, I just personally don't think it's an appropriate spot. I know it's not in our purview to choose a different spot, and I know it's not in our purview to go back, right, we're not able to go back to a previous item and add spots to it. So that's kind of where I stand. I guess a question for staff then also, any of the locations where they, their locations will not come through Planning Commission, is it possible to add any spots to those? Because this is one spot, can we add one spot to one of the locations designated by City Council that we don't have, that we're not reviewing tonight?
Chair Berman, I would want to understand what you mean by can we add?
Sorry. Given that the city needs to provide 13 OSV parking spots with this program, if Planning Commission happened to deny this one spot, yes, I understand City Council can kind of make their own decision and supersede our decision, but if City Council does entertain the comments that we provide for this spot, can they, are they able to just find another location for this one spot? So it wouldn't be us. I'm just trying to make the program work because we, we have to, and there needs to be 13 spots. And if this spot was determined not appropriate, can the city still comply with their legal requirement to provide 13 spots?
Chair Berman, to answer your question, if this, if the commission were to deny this permit and then kicked it back over to the council, and let's say the council made a different decision, or sorry, ended up also denying, let's say, in, in agreement with the commission, the legal effect of that would be to be out of compliance with the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement has specified the, the spaces even for the ones that are not before the Planning Commission. So those spaces have already also been set forth.
Oh, so the location of these spaces was a part of the legal agreement?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. Does anyone have a motion?
I'd like some sugar with my medicine.
Just a spoonful.
Chair Berman, if I may, there are some conditions of approval from prior public hearings that may be relevant for the commission in the event that a motion's made on this item. If you'll allow me, I'll just briefly read them. There's only two that I've seen applicable to carry over. The first is, the program space shall have a no parking buffer zone at the rear of the program space, the 10-foot by 30-foot, not less than five feet in depth, and the full width of the program space, 10 feet, with the exact depth at the discretion of the city engineer. That's one. And then the other is, all program participants shall comply with all Bay Area air quality management district regulations applicable to generators proposed for operation at the program spaces.
Thank you.
Could I just ask for clarification? Because of the other conditions, you asked for the backup buffer or the back buffer. In this case, did you, did you want to have that as well, or?
Oh, that was included, was it?
So the condition I read would have a no parking buffer zone at the rear of the program space, so the backup buffer, given that the front of the space already has a red-curved no parking zone. I didn't specify that additional buffer.
Thank you.
Thank you for checking. Vice Chair Hauser?
So not to complicate matters, but I feel like we're being asked to choose between safety and complying with a lawsuit, and this one, I'm just torn. So I think you guys have the, the weight of doing this, where I'm not going to make a difference, but I want to make sure that I'm kind of clear that I don't think I can support this one, so.
I share the same concerns, and I, I personally don't support this location. Commissioner Wright?
I still think we don't have the benefit of all the considerations that council went through. They may have gone through a myriad of other options, and this was the least of many other worse evils. We don't have that benefit, so it's hard for us to second-guess their work from here without having any input from them, and none of them are here to give us any of that information.
I do, I mean, I listened in on quite a few of city councils' meetings on this item, and I do know that for over a year, I mean, there's a task force and city council did put a lot of time and consideration, long meetings, not just similar to ours tonight. And I appreciate all the time that they've put into that. But, yeah, it's, it's, we, yeah, we're kind of in a tough situation.
I don't feel in a position to be able to make a motion or to be able to second it, but if I'm forced to vote, I will.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I think after a lot of work, this is probably among the least bad choices, and that's probably about the best you can say for it. So I think I can support the motion if it's made.
Are you willing to make the motion?
If I get some help.
I guess kind of taking, kind of a, a informal read, it's possible that this item may not pass. So I'm wondering, Acting Planning Director Murdoch, where may we go from here? If the majority of the commission may not support this item, should we have someone make a motion for the item and, and then we'll vote? Or maybe do we make a motion to deny?
Right, so the commission has a few options. It can make a motion to approve, and if that passes, we're done. If it does not pass, that is not tantamount to a denial. So whatever motion is made, we need to have an affirmative vote in order to have effect. So the commission could test a vote for an approval or denial at its discretion, depending on the motion and the second. The commission could continue the item if it needed further specific analysis. This one, actually, I'm not hearing what additional analysis could be. It sounds to me like an instinctive reaction to the space and its proximity to a key property adjacent to the space, and no amount of analysis will change the nature of that relationship, in my opinion. So a continuance may not be the best option, but it is one of the options if there's something that the staff needs to analyze. I would say, under the circumstances, I don't know how the commission's leaning, other than at least two commissioners seem reluctant to approve this, this space at this point in time. What I will say is, our normal recommendation to the city council, or to the Planning Commission, rather, is, in the event that there's a denial, to please continue it, state specific reasons, and allow the staff to prepare denial resolutions supported by the weight of the evidence. In this case, due to the time constraints and the fact that the city is the applicant and litigation is a low risk from the applicant in this instance, that we would ask you, in the interest of time, to make a definitive action tonight, whichever route it goes. And should it be a denial, to state as much evidence as you can to support that action as to why this, the findings cannot be made for this particular space.
Commissioner Wright?
Would it be possible to make it a condition on this that we ask that you try to negotiate with plaintiff to move this one spot? So it'd be like a temporary approval, and hopefully the plaintiff will work with us and council to find what we would find to be a more suitable spot.
To renegotiate the settlement agreement that the council's approved? Is that to add a condition of approval? Is that?
That we ask to see if there's any feasibility to that, that they at least try.
Would that put your litigation in jeopardy if, if we did that?
So I think we've, we've fielded this question in a number of different forms, and I think I'm going to try to stick to the same answer again, that the spaces have been approved by the city council, and the commission can decide whether this space is appropriate or not with respect to the findings required for approval of the permit. And so to, to push for alternative locations is beyond the purview of the Planning Commission, in my opinion. And so this is a yea or nay on this space, but not looking beyond this space to some other potential space, given the city council's action and the relationship to the settlement agreement.
Oh, Vice Chair Hauser?
I, it was more of a reaction to what Commissioner Wright said, but based on Acting Director Murdoch's response, I think, I think I'm going to withdraw my, my light. What, yeah, I'm gonna.
Commissioner Godwin, would you like to give a motion?
Sure. I move that the, that Planning Commission approved coastal development permit, CDP 43722, subject to the conditions we've established for an on, one on-street temporary safe parking space on the west side of the Francisco Boulevard, public right-of-way, east of 2400 Francisco Boulevard.
And Commissioner Godwin, if I may, Chair Berman, does the motion include the two conditions of approval that I read?
And, and the, including the conditions of approval was read by Planning, Planning Director Murdoch.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin, for the clarification.
Is there a second? Commissioner Domarat?
I'll second it.
Before we vote, are we, sorry.
Go ahead, yep.
Before we vote, are we three to two? Is that what, is that where we're at?
I'm predicting it may turn into a three to two.
Can I have a minute just to?
Yep. So we have, sure, we have, so we have a motion and a second in favor of the project.
And an affirmative vote by a majority of the commission will conclude this item with an approval. A failure of the motion to pass with a majority in favor would result in the status quo, where we don't have a decision or a resolution. So the commission would need to continue to deliberate until it reached a majority in support of some motion on the item.
So is three, excuse, I'm like.
No, go ahead, go ahead, yeah.
Three to a majority, or do we need four?
So for, for permit actions such as this, it's a majority of the commissioners present. So in this case, three to two passes the item. For legislative items, a majority of the entire commission, four, needs to be in favor, regardless of the number present, so.
So in this instance, three would still pass the motion?
Correct.
Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Please vote. All right, so we have two yeses and three nos, so that does not pass. All right. Is there any other item that we need to touch on for this?
Not respect to the motion that failed. The commission still needs to deliberate and reach a majority on an action to take.
Okay.
I guess it's up to the three nos to figure out what it is that we can say.
I think all, I think all of us can still.
Yeah, my, my point is, in three years, you know, Shark Park is not going to get developed in three years, and three years you can't, and, and they're not going to be there. So it's, it's a short-term, three-year thing. That's why I voted yes.
Commissioner Domarat? I'm sorry. Do you mind speaking into the microphone?
Oh, are we allowed to deliberate on this thing? I'm sorry, go ahead.
So now we're in deliberation again?
So, so I guess the, the way I voted was that this is a three-year program, and in three years, I want to just make sure that if, if this is, area is not a go, then we, we kill it in three years. And, and make sure that the, the community is aware of what it does. We analyze the data, we make sure it's a, a location that we don't want for the future. But for, for right now, I think it'd be a, it's a location that, that can provide data to the lessons learned and how well it would function. But as, as the community of Shark Park develops further, it could be a location that we would not consider for the future.
Commissioner Godwin, I think you were the other yes. Do you have any thoughts that you want to add to Commissioner Domarat, Domarat's statement? Do you have any thoughts that you want to add to Commissioner Domarat's statement?
Not significantly. It seems like it's the least bad option, the best way for the city to proceed. So, I mean, in three years, a lot can happen. A lot of things that's come before us have been proposed and haven't been built. It isn't clear that this is definitely a problem now. But if it is in the future, it can be dealt with in the future when it's a real problem as opposed to a potential problem.
I'm always just concerned when emergency responders say this is a problem for emergency response. And I don't claim to know any of the ins and outs of the Water District's organization, but that was a pretty strong letter. So in the interest of finding some sort of solution, I don't think, I mean, clearly the motion failed to pass it by the similar metrics that we were using on the last two. I wonder if this would be the opportunity to provide some sort of, like a very limited, but some sort of like two-month reporting back, let's take planning commission out of it, like a two-month report back to the council from North Coast County Water District to see where things stand and leave it between the emergency responder and the city council. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I would be able to, I feel like I could support something that would give people who are responsible for sustaining the safety of our water, especially in a drought where like they're responding to broken pipes, all sorts of things. I think that would provide the level of comfort that I would need. I don't claim to speak for you, but.
I agree with the statement that Vice Chair brought up. Is it possible to implement as a condition of approval some reporting requirement? A very discreet reporting requirement?
So as they deliberate, Chief, I guess you would be the closest one to being able to comment on the emergency access of vehicles and so forth. I mean, would you consider that an issue at this point? Or something that we can learn about, or?
Well, on a lighter note, I have red and blue lights. I can get wherever I need. However, I have to admit, I don't have any knowledge as to how this would affect an emergency response from the Water District. I also, in all fairness to the Water District, I don't know the type of equipment they have back there. They are emergency responders, isn't there? They are, they would be first responders to some sort of a water emergency. But how they respond to it, what equipment they're pulling out of there, and how an OSB parked there would affect that, I certainly couldn't.
But their access gates, they have two access gates. One is up, I guess, further north of where this location is, and one is on the other around the corner. The big access is not even on that road, but.
Correct, and it's to my understanding where the parking is, the proposed parking is laid out there, it doesn't affect the gate.
Yeah.
And just as a reminder, parking does occur there now. And as an emergency can happen at any time, parking can occur, can be occurring at any time there as well, so. Just for a point of view.
If it was a problem, they could have had a red zone painted out in front of them.
I think I'm just highlighting the scenario that if there was a problem at, you know, one in the morning and someone could be parking along those 30 feet at one in the morning anyway, so it doesn't change the existing status.
I guess my concerns in regards to access aren't so much with the Water District. It's more so, I know that this road, it feels narrow when you drive there. And there aren't even oversized vehicles that commonly park there to begin with. And there's, a lot of people take this route in this intersection. So I'm more concerned with accidents and cars hitting side mirror to side mirror, or whatever it is. I just, I guess Commissioner Godwin's right. I have to trust that this is the lesser of many other evils, so it's probably the least bad option, but it just doesn't seem like a good location. So I think we have two options, and sorry, I'm tired, so I may not be processing correctly, but we have two options. We can keep deliberating until the motion or the project passes, or we can formally provide a denial with specific aspects of why we deny.
Did staff have a response to the?
Oh, yes.
Just one more moment, please, Chair Berman.
Okay, yeah, sorry, take your time.
Something occurred to me.
I mean, my goal would be to leave with everybody happy-ish.
We walked in with a smelly bag. We're gonna walk out what we want to.
That should be our slogan.
Leave it on the table.
Well, I liked her idea, giving it back to council.
That's what a denial will do.
Yeah, but that implicates so much more.
I guess in my career, when you hand a problem back to your boss, it rarely results in a promotion or a bonus.
That's a good analogy. Hand the problem back to your boss.
What if we were to make a motion that we want to deny? We want to approve this again just to deny it on purpose? So that we can make the point that we don't want to be put in this position by denying it twice? Then doing whatever concocting over there.
Like do another test vote?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair Berman, for the opportunity for staff to.
Yeah, no problem. Well, in the meantime, we came up with the planning commission slogan, "Everyone walks away happy-ish."
I like it. So the condition of approval that we would propose for discussion purposes is as follows. "After not less than two months and not more than four months of operations, the applicant shall prepare a written operational review report summarizing operation of the program space in relation to the adjacent North Coast County Water District facility for review and consideration by the city manager."
I think it's a well-crafted motion. I would ask that input from the Water District be solicited without a requirement for receiving it, but that we are at least soliciting it. And if received, that that input is also provided to the city manager. At that juncture, is it up for staff to implement changes or amendments as seen fit?
So what we would suggest is adding an additional sentence that says, "The applicant shall confer with the North Coast County Water District to seek its input into the report."
Okay, and then nothing to change the condition, but once the report is received by the city manager, does the city manager have some level of power to make adjustments?
So I think, as you've heard us relay in other responses this evening, you know, there should be finality with respect to this space for the time being in order to comply with the settlement agreement. The city, you know, has the ultimate discretion. Should this space prove unsafe, to discontinue its use, that may have ramifications with respect to the settlement agreement. But the city needs to balance those factors and take the appropriate measures to protect public health and safety. And so we would, I think, seriously consider any concerns that were identified with respect to the report that's contemplated here.
Can we make it a condition that this be the last space filled?
Currently, no more spaces are contemplated in the settlement agreement. There are 13 spaces required and 13 spaces identified.
In terms of filling it with applicants, can it be the last space filled?
Like the last space that gets filled?
With a?
Part of the management plan, I guess, you gotta leave flexibility. You don't know, you know, kind of sizes everything else, but maybe, you know, they could.
Well, I don't know if Executive Director Reese is still on the line, but she had indicated in a prior public hearing that the intent of the Resource Center as the program operator was to fill all the spaces more or less simultaneously. And I'm not sure how attempting to delay the filling of this space would affect the operations.
She reiterated that tonight.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, yes, the intent is to fill all of the spaces at once so that when we have to move them every 29 days, it's an easy move for everybody. Also, the intent is to have all spaces filled, whether it's with program participants or the temporary parking for other oversized vehicles in town. Because we don't want any spaces not being used.
Thank you, and good morning.
Yes, good morning.
Do you still have questions, Commissioner Wright? Okay, Vice Chair Hauser?
I don't need any, like, thing on the timing. I concur with the recommendation of staff to do everything simultaneously. I would be interested in potentially adding one more condition that says something along the lines of if an active construction project is created, then the city also assesses the noise impacts on occupants. Because I think there's also a health issue with having noise pollution. So again, I'm not, the other one is probably fine, but I would, if it's easy, I would add something like that.
How is that different from anybody else doing a construction project on their next-door neighbor's house?
If you're living in an oversized vehicle, the windows, like, you don't have double-pane windows. You don't have, like, there's, so what many studies say.
But you have laminated glass, which is better than?
The RVs have a stronger amount of glass.
But the laminated glass, you know, when you hit it, how it doesn't, like, break? It has that, like, plastic in between? That's actually a better sound barrier than normal glass.
Than normal glass, okay. I'll rescind my request.
Do we need to make an entirely new motion? Or can we use the same motion that Commissioner Godwin gave and add the conditions of approval that Mr. Murdock read?
Since the motion that was previously read into was already voted on, so we would be starting anew.
Okay. Does anyone want to provide a motion and incorporate the new conditions of approval? I will go ahead and help make a motion, because I, I mean, the two options that we have, I think I would prefer to probably create less heartache and paperwork for our city staff and everyone. I appreciate everyone's time tonight. So I think I would prefer to make a motion in favor than deny. So I am going to move that the planning commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approves coastal development permit, CDP 43722, I think I'm on the right one, yep. By adopting the resolution included as Attachment A to the staff report, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A and the ones read by staff to the resolution and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference. And to clarify, the conditions read by staff just recently and with the prior motion, because I don't believe you reread them.
And I can read them quickly, just for clarity and the record, given the hour.
Please, thank you.
"After not less than two months and not more than four months of operations, the applicant shall prepare a written operational review report summarizing operation of the program space in relation to the adjacent North Coast County Water District facility for review and consideration by the city manager. The applicant shall confer with the North Coast County Water District to seek its input into the report." Next condition, "The program space shall have a no-parking buffer zone at the rear of the program space, 10 feet by 30 feet, not less than five feet in depth, and the full width of the program space, 10 feet, with the exact depth at the discretion of the city engineer." And then the third condition, "All program participants shall comply with all Bay Area air quality management district regulations applicable to generators proposed for operation at the program spaces."
Thank you. So I provided a motion. Does anyone have a second? Commissioner Domarat?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. All right, and that passes. All five in favor, none opposed. Read this quickly. Thank you, everyone. "Anyone aggrieved by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision may be had only if a petition is filed with the court no later than the 90th day following the date upon which the decision becomes final. Judicial review of environmental determinations may be subject to a shorter time period for litigation. In certain cases, 30 days following the date of final decision." So we already went through communication, so does anyone have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
And I will second that motion. So we have a motion and a second, please vote. All right, and we're adjourned. Good morning, everyone, thank you.
Bye, Director Reese.